Welcome to the Town of Barrington Planning Board Meeting for July 19th. This is continued from July 12th meeting, which was rescheduled based to no power here. Both of the members and nots, Buddy starting at you. Say who, say his present, your name present.
Buddy Hackett, present.
Joyce Capiello, present.
Andy Donnigan, present.
Bob Tessier, present.
Ron Eller, present.
Bedas Surprised, Town Planner.
John Hackett, Board Enforcement.
Right, first item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. I guess we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve. We have July 12th.
We do, we, since we did, the meeting was called a order and we had a quorum. The meeting minutes from that as well as from the previous meeting.
Anybody have any questions or comments on the meeting minutes, so the one that was canceled? All right, hearing no. You got a change?
Not canceled.
Continued, okay. I said rescheduled, didn't I? Okay. Anybody have a motion to accept these meeting minutes?
I'll second the motion.
Buddy, start with you.
Yay.
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 Yay. All right, moving on to the June 21st meeting minutes. Any comments or corrections on those meeting minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes as written.
I'll make a motion to accept those meeting minutes as written. John.
John.
Yay.
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 All right, updates from the Town Planner.
Good evening, Board Members. I'm here to discuss our CIP process. Briefly mentioned at our June meeting. Just wanted to bring everybody up to speed if anybody has not been with, through the CIP process. It's a capital improvements project process. Last one was done in 2019, or our current one is 2019. Just to give you a little bit of little information on it. As the Town Planner, I'm the agent for the Planning Board to meet with all of our department heads to see what their list of projects are. The statute requires from the Cage Basing Plan Board, the School Board as well, in planning the CIP process. They're for specific capital projects to be a cost growth of at least 10,000, useful life of 10 years, and as non-recurring, non-annual budget item, or any project buying bond financing. Since this is a part action, I will be bringing it back to you hopefully in September, October during a working session to help break the projects from the different department heads. What they do is they rank what projects they have, like for example, if they need a new fire engine or like the recreation's looking to upgrade their amenities. So each department has like a list of their needs that goes before the Select Board to act as like a budgetary tool for them. So if there's any, does anybody have any questions regarding that?
Point of re-acy. Point of re-ignition.
Right here?
Yeah.
Maybe the School Board might. So just wanted to keep everybody appraised of things to come. Also on the, just let you know on the 25th of July, we'll have our, yeah, already had our Subcommittee Master Plan Chapter Update Kickoff Meeting. Official, I guess, official kickoff meeting, but our first working meeting. I just want to let, keep the board updated, the meetings that we have. And that's all I have currently.
One thing I've got to mention, if anybody has cell phones, could you please put them on mute or off? Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, we have a lot line adjustment. Is anybody here to talk to that?
Evening, Board. My name's Joel Reynolds, Department's associates, and I'm here with the landowner Wayne Richard.
Speak up a little bit, Vincent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Speak up more, move with microphones.
Mike doesn't do anything aromatizing.
Yeah.
Now.
Okay, so do you get that? I'm Joel Reynolds and this is Wayne Richard. He's the landowner of the property. We are here to get some directions from the Board so that when we do submit an application and plans, they are completed and we don't have to go back to multiple hearings. That's what our goal is here. Thing is trying to do is that, we have the sketches in front of us. Wayne, Wayne owns Lot 14. He lives at Lot 13. He is proposing to do a lot line adjustment. Sketch shows a lot line down through the middle. That's existing lot line. And what he's proposing to do is do a lot line revision to keep Lot 13 and 14, but they'll be smaller. Then create Lot 13-1. Lot 13-1 will have its frontage only on Hemlock Lane, which is a private road. That's, that's the main reason why we're here to see how that, what it's going to want us to do, because it is on a private road. A little confused, we're talking with top department heads and everybody that realize that the Selectmen have a policy based on billing permits. But we don't, I'm trying to figure out what is going to be required of us through the Planning Board process. So if you could give us some information, what would you like to see us do for that?
I got a couple of questions.
Great.
On 14, the proposed area, that's 1.88 acres, is that 80,000 square feet to comply with the regulations?
Yeah.
The other question I have is, it seems to me Lot 13 is a non-conforming lot.
It, it has frontage on Hemlock Lane as well.
The frontage is on, we have vehicular access according to our regulations and the address is on Partridge Drive, so.
But it exists as, as a lot before.
Well, we have a regulation that if it abuts two roads, both are considered frontages for setbacks. But access can only be taken from one frontage, it can't be taken from both. So they're, they're still considered frontages for setback purposes and for counting dimensional requirements by our regulation. The requirement to take access from your frontage, but it doesn't say which one if you've got multiple frontages. And if you look on corner lot, I think it is in your definitions, it talks about how each, if you're on a corner lot, each road has to act as frontage where you have to step back, and that's in definition.
And I'm concerned about 5.1.4. It's, it's division of zoning. It's, it's in zoning. Lot line adjustments on confor, non-conforming lots, cannot decrease the size of the non-conforming lot is one of the requirements. So where you.
Cannot decrease the deformity of it. So you're still going to have more than the 200-foot frontage even if he does that.
Well, if he's, if he's not conforming now, because he's got two foot of front, 200 feet of frontage.
Yeah, okay, if you want to count the, 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 private road is not frontaged, which I believe is incorrect. But if you wanted to say that, he's gonna end up with the same frontage. He's not decreasing frontage.
But it says you can't reduce the area. So does not decrease, 5.1.4, parentheses, one parentheses, B. In the. Says you can't decrease the size of the non-conforming lot.
If the lot's not conforming because it's not big enough to be conforming.
If it hasn't got the right frontage, it's non-conforming, and then I, it says you can't reduce the size of it's non-conforming. So that's my question, John.
Says the lot line adjustment does not create a new violation in zoning ordinance or increase an existing non-conforming. So if you wanted to say that frontage is not right, it's not increasing the non-conforming.
I, I agree with that. 1A. But 1.41B, the lot line adjustment does not decrease the size of the non-conforming. That's.
Rendering the conform, the lot, non-conforming, I mean, size wise.
It says, it says or, not and, so I think it's standalone, John. That's my question. I read that as if it's non-conforming, you can't decrease the size. That's the way I read it.
So even though, I, I, I think you're wrong about the frontage, I think both roads count as frontage by my definition on our zoning. But even if you want to go by that on there, if someone has a lot that's 190 feet of frontage and 50 acres, you couldn't do a lot line adjustment? Is that what you're trying to, I mean.
I'm just, I'm asking, that's what the regulation says. Now, 4.1.2 defines the frontage as vehicular access. So by, if he comes, it looks like it comes in on Partridge. Doesn't get 200 feet of Partridge. But to me, it's non-conforming. And then once it's non-conforming, it says you can't change the size. Agrees, it doesn't make it more non-conforming for the frontage requirement, but it increases the size.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my question. That's my issue.
Okay, so what it says on the one point, the one about 4.1.2.
Yeah.
What that stands for is you have to take access from your frontage.
It says wherever you take access is your frontage. So you can, if you have more than one choice, wherever you try to access the vehicles, vehicle access, that's automatically.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this and I'm gonna, I'm not sure what you're getting. It says the side of the parcel used to satisfy the frontage requirement specified in Table of Dimensional Standards or other alternative standards must be the side of the parcel used to provide vehicle access to the property.
Right. So once you provide vehicle access to the property, that's automatically your frontage side, John, right?
No. It says the side of the parcel used to satisfy the frontage requirement shall be the one that you use for access, so.
But he's already got access, so that's the frontage.
Nah, you're twisting that, that's not what it says. It says that if you have a lot, you have to take access from your frontage. If you, and I've had a lot of them go to the ZVA not to take access from their frontage because of wetland issues or something. So you have to take access from your frontage. You can have a backlot of 50 feet, 25 for each one, you still take access from your frontage.
But he takes access from Partridge Road. So if he has to take, he takes access from his frontage, took it from Partridge Road, Partridge Road is his frontage.
No, it says if you have, you have to take access from your frontage, doesn't define it as that is your frontage.
John, stick, stick with me, if you have to take access from the frontage, and he's taking it, he's taking it from Partridge Lane, that's his frontage.
Excuse me for a second, just, because we've done this before on other properties and frontages is, what they're trying to say is that you have, you can't get access from another lot. That's what that's, that whole is, is talking about. So if I couldn't get access from another lot, then I'd have to go for variance. So I've done that before with lots.
No, this, this is where if you have more than, if you're a corner lot, for example, you have more than one choice. Whatever side you take, you take, wherever you take your vehicle access from becomes your.
Okay, the definition of frontage. The length of a lot, line, a budding a classified highway or other road on which a building may be lawfully built. So the other road is the private road, so the frontage is both by our definition. And I think you're twisting that thing, taking access from.
I'm not twisting, I'm asking, yes.
No, I, but I mean, I think the way you're reading that thing about taking access from your frontage, that means you can take access from any of your frontage. Because you take access on one road, doesn't make the other road not your frontage. They're both frontages. And that's why I want to also get to the definition on corner lots.
What do you think corner lots is?
Corner lot, so you go to the definition of corner lot. It says a lot.
What's that, John?
And in the definition in zoning, it says, yeah, page 75. It says a lot at the point of intersection, cutting of two or more intersecting streets. The interior angle of the street shared shall, in a case of a curved street, is tend the lot line being normal to 135 degrees. Each street frontage shall be considered a front yard. Each street frontage shall be covered. So if you read that definition, the definition on frontage, their interpretation really is not conforming to this. That definition, that thing you're reading just says you have to take access from your frontage. Doesn't make the other road non-frontage.
So you're saying that we can count to 370, therefore it's not non-conforming? That's your, that's your opinion?
Okay. By those are the two definitions that's in zoning to determine what is frontage and what is a corner lot.
I think frontage is determined where you take a vehicle access. We had that with a guy 125. So I'm not convinced, but I'm not unconvinced.
Well, that guy actually had two frontages, he had to meet setbacks on both of them. That's why he ended up going to the zoning board and getting relieved not to have to do 40 from the town road and 75 from 125, which would have left the lot unhilledable. Because they're both considered frontage if you, because you do that whole corner lot. It says that any frontage on the street is a frontage. So you have to count two frontages. It isn't always just one frontage. You have to count on both as frontages of the front roads. It does say you have to take access either from. Now, with this particular case, because it's a private road, there's an issue of either upgrading the road to meet that private road standard that we have in the thing, or you could do it like we did that lot line adjustment on Finney Lane. You say the new lot has to conform with the Select Board's policy on private roads to make it clear. Because if you don't make it clear one way or the other, once this is a subdivision approved by the Planning Board, you wouldn't have to do any upgrades beyond what you require here unless you put the condition that it meets the one from the Select.
Okay. Normally we do that with a building permit, but you're saying since it's subdivision.
Yeah, 67441, if the lot's approved by the Planning Board, it's exempt from 67441. So when you did the one on Finney Lane, because we had the concern about that and what it was going to be to upgrade the road, after talking to Town Council, it was one of them things that if you made it a condition that they still had to meet Selectman's requirement for the private road, then they wouldn't be exempt. But we also have descriptions on a private road, standards and subdivision about the width being those, I think it's 35 feet and there was, it was 18-foot travel way and showed, so anyways, it's a little more, it's a little higher standard than Selectman's Class 6 and private road standard. But when it talks about private road, it also gives a number of traffic vehicles per day, which that low road kind of exceeds that. So even though it's a private road, the vehicle just per day is different than what the chart shows in your subdivision. That's the reason why Joel's here, to try to get a clear understanding to what you guys are going to require on the road. Whether you're going to have like the Selectman's policy, if you're going to want a road upgrade to create the other lot. I hate to take your thunder away, but because of how the conversation went, I figured I would explain the issue.
Oh, yeah. When I've talked, we've been talking a while about this, so.
Yeah, we had a long conversation in the office, that's why we told him to come talk to you guys. So you might want to look at your road standards in your subdivision regs, the chart there that has 38, like that.
I think that's what John was just trying to say. Do you assume, would include the subdivision and lay a fine that standards has to be taken care of in the billing permit process? How's that going to be handled?
Talking with page 57, John? Page 57 for the road standards? Right away is 30?
Oh, it's 30, I thought it was 30.
I think it's 30.
Been a while since I looked.
It says pavement width 20. Then I think it's two shoulders someplace.
Oh. See, it says minor access private, but it also tells trips under 200 per day.
Yeah.
That particular road probably has over 200 today, even though it's still a private road. So that's kind of where the controversy and your decision would have to be. And then because that first section of road is pretty good, that his upgrade would really only need to be to where he takes access for the newly created lot.
Yeah.
And then there was one that you did out behind Brooks Carpettes, what used to be Whitsit, well now.
St. L.
Yeah, behind where St. L Air Motorsports is, there's, there's a lot that got created out there and there was a waiver asked to not do the paving because that road didn't have paving on it, but the road was nice and wide. The road agent looked at it. And I'm assuming you'd want the road agent to look at the road and make recommendations to you guys. Part of this application.
He went today with us.
But I mean, it's, when you make a full application, you guys would want his comments on.
How many, how many dwellings are serviced by this road?
More than four. Oh, there's a lot of dwellings out there because it goes down along the lake.
26 of them.
26, I know there's quite a few down there.
Right away is 50 feet for that, John. Right away is 50 feet for that.
Yeah, because if you do a number of trips a day, but then.
And, and that dwelling is serviced.
Right.
Not all of them are year-round, but there are 26, I would say, down.
Yeah.
And I moved there, the lot you're talking about has actually frontage on Partridge Drive, but also has like 50 feet on Mary Hill Farm. Never been able to figure that out, I've been there a little over 40 years. But then it comes over to Hemlock, which used to be Elwood. So I've, I've already been there 40 years, that's the lot you're talking about, I hope I don't have to change.
Okay, well. I mean, I think the, the road standards that apply are 50-foot right away, 22-foot pavement width.
Pavement?
With, yeah.
So you, you're saying you'd have to pave down to the access point? That would be the land value, so.
Gone with gravel.
Yeah, you have, but you would have to wave it.
Yeah.
And that's why they're here for direction, because they want a feeling because of the use and the impact that they're creating, where it's on the very beginning of the road, how much do you want them to put into the road? Because if you look at that little plan you got, you're just, you know, you're only going a couple hundred feet down the road before you get to the lot. It's not like you're going, you know, 1,000 feet.
It's gravel from there, it's gravel from your property on, right?
It's gravel from Mary Hill Farm Road, which is where it comes out on the corner.
Yeah.
And it's all the way down to an old section that had a 25-foot right away where all the houses but one are down at that.
You see the jog room back now.
Say it again, Joe.
There's, there's a jog, but he's just talking about how the right away mirrors down, down here.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it's, it's gravel the whole way, right?
Yes, until that point then it's paved.
They paved, it's quite steep.
Yeah.
Trucks to get in and out.
And the pavement's been there for a long time, it's not in very good shape.
No, they just.
Yeah, if we did it.
Yeah, they just redid it. But to the same spec they had before.
But so, so all he's trying to do is one lot, so if it's going to be that he, they're going to require the pavement road, then it's no sense of even, so he probably will come back again.
Well, there's no guarantees, but I mean, we've allowed gravel in the past.
Right.
But it's, you know, it is a 50-foot right away and it's 22 feet, so it's pretty wide. Got that much right away?
Measured up to the line that you see intersecting the flat line, that's approximately 500 feet.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about the width of the width.
The width measured today, it was all within 20 feet, needs to be cleaned up. The road agent said we should do this and that. It's got, you know, from my, my advantage points, that 40 years of having things.
Yeah, but the right away, how big is the right away?
50.
50 feet, okay.
And then the travel way that's out there, okay, you just met with Mark and stuff and it's really, there isn't really shoulders, it's all gravel. It is 20-foot wide right there. There isn't like a 16-foot travel way. 14-foot, it's pretty much all of it's the same. That two, few places, I went down there, taped, measured it and stuff and it wasn't. He, he, he does, this does go further, he does have some areas that he wants us to do, it's on, but again, if going to ask us to, trying to, there's no sense of doing that. It's just, he's trying to help out somebody to get, get a lot for someone, so that's why.
There has to be a waiver request for that. You know, you're not, not going to get.
Also, I know it's just not.
You're not going to get any guarantees tonight.
I know it's not value hearing stuff.
Part of the reason why you want to know this is there are also the ability, he could do a backlot subdivision and gate it that way by having a shared drive coming in off of Partridge Lane, which would be totally legal too to get that out of the lot.
I, I understand.
But they really would rather have it as a separate lot coming down. So it's not like it's that 20-foot pavement, that 20-foot of width going down through with them little upgrades that Mark wants is going to exceed the requirements that the Selectmen have for their Class 6 and private road.
You know, and just to add to that, prior to us even realizing that that was a new rule, we didn't find out only by accident that we had to do that. But they had got together, the HOA that runs and takes care of that road and had already said that there's another house lot going in, an existing lot down, down the road, which abuts this lot that we're trying to make. And they had agreed to put in some culverts for the, for the HOA already. They were trying to be good about it at that point and after that, we found out, oh, there could be other things that we.
And if that's the lot I'm thinking of, that had a subdivision approval, so they didn't even have to comply with the Classics and Private Road policy. Because I passed Select Board, we passed Planning Board approved that as a subdivision without requiring any road upgrades.
Right, right.
Because I actually issued a building permit there once and then, people were nurses and then that's when pandemic hit and they lost their jobs because of they shut everything down other than taking care of pandemics and they ended up losing.
Right. So if we come back with plans, how detailed plans would you like to see for the road? Show what distance is there and then get basis from.
Well, isn't the requirement for, yeah, so if you're going to have the road upgrade, you'd want them to show the road design to meet this. You do have the prerogative of doing like you did on that other one, say that before a building permit could be issued, they would have to comply with the Selectman's policy in Class 6 and private road, which basically that road basically does comply now, but yet it wouldn't, you wouldn't be dictating how the road has to be built. So that's, you guys have a, you guys could go either direction. You could say, I want the road built to this certain standard and they would have to show you what that standard is going to be. Or you could leave it as a private road thing because that's how the Selectmen are dealing with the rest of the road and systematic upgrade that the Selectmen have, achievement has actually how it's worth. Looking at some of the upgrades I've already seen for some of the permits.
So we could ask, ask you guys to prove it as, as it is, the condition that it meets the Select.
Well, I know, yeah, you couldn't get a building permit on that until it meets it. And that was the same idea as what you did on Finney Lane.
And, and that kind of makes sense because if you read the, the policy, it's based on percentage of houses being built. So we have no idea when the houses will be built, so the temp up to 10%.
Yeah, and the worst part is after this, because the roadway gets narrow. So the roadway's got plenty wide to this lot, which is one of the advantages that's already in place, because you already got a 50-foot.
10%, is an, is an alternative pathway.
Right.
You can, you can widen the road to town, to town standards, to your lot and be done.
Right.
The 10% is an, if you can't do that, the 10% is an alternative. You know, the other, before you had no way to get it done, absent Select Board approval. So, you know, before you, you did not have a pathway. Now with the 10%, there is a pathway. So, but that's, that's optional, if you can be, if you can do it to your lot, you know, you're good. See what the rest of. Any other questions, comments?
I just know the road agent generally has been going 16-foot with two-foot on each side shoulder.
Well, that's because of, that's the policy in the Class 6 and private road for the Selectmen, but it's not the regulations you have in your subdivision.
But did he ask for a waiver?
So he'd have to ask for waiver for the subdivision regs for this approval to go through, but you could grant them waivers based on the condition that they have the Selectmen authorize a building permit on the private road and build to that standard. Or you could describe a standard now that you're going to have or waive some sections like you'd like the pavement, but you want a certain width of gravel. I mean, that, you guys have that prerogative, you could take any one of those directions as a board. And that's why I couldn't give Joel an answer in the office because you can understand that you guys really hold the cards in this.
So we don't really know until.
So I guess what he's looking for, are you having the Selectmen do it or you want a certain design to the road upgrade? I guess that's what he's here for tonight, if you guys could come up with a consensus to how you feel about that.
Well, it just seems like everybody's going to the Selectmen looking for that.
But, but if we.
Subdivide it.
Does he have us a new policy to have a 50-foot right away and?
No, no, no. Because of the subdivision, the subdivision, you guys have prerogative to determine what their access is. You have that, it's totally up to you because of how you have the regulations on any subdivision.
This is a lot line revision, normally you're talking, he's doing a subdivision too.
He's doing a subdivision too.
Building permit on an existing lot. This is different.
Right, so he's actually creating one new lot with this as a lot line adjustment and a subdivision. This is not just a straight lot line adjustment, it's a subdivision too. So because of that, you have a right to determine access to all the lots. So one of the lots is on the private road. You can require that private road to be upgraded to that standard that you have for that. You could use that minor access private road. Then the council will. So like Juan's right, if you look at the trip a day, it rarely brings you into the major access, though it is a private road.
In the dwellings too, so both of those kick out.
So then when you get into that, do you require that full twenty feet with three-foot shoulders? Or twenty-two with three-foot shoulders? Are you gonna waive the paving? I mean, there's multiple ways that you could address that. That's why, yeah.
You pave the requirements and let the proof is be done at the building permit process. That's what I'm here for. So is it, you're gonna make us do something that's subdivision requirement at the subdivision stage? We get it done at the building permit.
So to me, I wanna see something in the subdivision, so I won't, to me, I don't wanna punch it down to the selectmen. That would be my.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, how the rest feel, that's what the whole thing is. It's a board decision, not a person's decision.
Be no shock to anybody that I'm not willing to punch it to the selectmen. No sense.
I understand what he's saying, slightly different because it's actually partially. Everybody we've been, you know, I guess we could discuss it in probably consensus that will not be overly expensive for the.
That's why he's here tonight.
And this one, John, to me is a bit different, because he has the ability to improve it.
To his, yeah.
It's all his frontage.
Right.
Most people, they're way back and they don't have the right-of-way. They actually don't have the ability to meet the requirement.
You only want him to go into his access to his property?
Front of the property, yeah.
The whole frontage.
The whole frontage.
The whole frontage.
Yeah, the Potridge from the, I mean, what's the name of the road? Hemlock from the corner to the end of his property.
Okay. Wait, past is where his driveway's gonna be?
Beyond his driveway.
That's what I don't.
That's another. Where's his driveway gonna be?
Right showing.
Right there?
I would say that's some.
Driveway.
Two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet? That's all I'm looking at.
Well, it's more than two hundred feet, right? It's because the frontage on.
Less than two hundred.
What's the frontage going along Hemlock on lot thirteen?
Thirteen's about thirteen feet.
No, I meant just from Hemlock, from where it comes off of Mary Hill to where the new lot line's gonna be.
Oh, five hundred.
It's three hundred seventy, the new lot thirteen would be three hundred seventy is three feet of frontage. And then you're talking about John, yeah.
It's about a thousand feet.
Thousand feet.
I mean, it's gonna make it a non-sub lot, which people at the HOA like that aspect of it. It won't change that, basically.
Any other comments?
So for the direction, do you want pavement too, or just gravel? What about the width? Because the width talks about the twenty-two plus.
Twenty-two or twenty-four, John.
Oh, it says twenty-two pavement width, and then it shows a shoulder of three feet, which would give you twenty-eight foot. That's the reason why they're here, because they don't wanna have to go that wide and they don't wanna have the pavement.
You'd have to.
You do all that, so are you willing to waive some of that to have it be the twenty feet or the twenty-two feet of gravel way going down? That's.
I mean, I think the waiver request put in there was supportable, but you know, to give you a sense, I don't think I have that problem. I don't know what the rest of the board.
I wouldn't.
But, so is this, so we're gonna go through the planning board process to do the moving for the road, or are we gonna go through the select? I know you don't want.
If they have you do the road to the twenty, if they have you do that road, delist it at twenty-two feet or twenty feet of a gravel way down and then waive the other stuff, you would not need a Class Six and Private Road policy from the selectmen, because the planning board determined the access to that lot as part of the subdivision.
But would the board approve something if it went? If we asked it?
Once the board approved this, it doesn't go to the selectmen and we kick it to them.
I know, but if we ask for approval for the subdivision, would the board approve this as part of the building permit?
Right, then it would be the selectmen. They wouldn't be determining.
So, which, that's why I'm here. Which way are we gonna go? Are we gonna go? I know Ron does not want to push it onto the selectmen, but the rest of the board, how they feel.
I could go either way. Ron's way, I certainly could agree to a waiver with no paving and a little bit narrower. Yeah, I mean, if you're looking at, if the selectmen would probably want sixteen feet of gravel, we would take twenty apparently of gravel, so.
Technically, the selectmen is twenty feet. It's a sixteen-foot travel way with two-foot shoulders, so it really adds up to.
That's what it.
But you have an actual current travel way under.
It already is that way.
Well, that's what you guys agree to as a board. That's why we're trying, because if you guys agree to this as a board, that he doesn't go to the selectmen for a building permit.
Right.
If you kick it to the selectmen, then he's gotta go through that policy. So that's that's the understanding. I wanted to make sure you guys knew before you gave the direction.
So currently, what we're looking at from this board is twenty feet gravel down.
Is that what, that's what you guys.
The requirement's pavement, but
Right.
I think most of us are signaling that we would probably be open to approving a waiver for gravel. There are guarantees, but I think.
The subdivision guidelines, then do we have to look at other guidelines for subdivision? Underground utilities?
So they would have to apply by all the rules of the subdivision. Underground utilities kick in automatically. They're required, unless they ask for a waiver of that, because he's coming for a subdivision. And whether you kick it to the selectmen on the road upgrades or not, doesn't matter. He would still have to do underground utilities unless he asks for a waiver.
Onto the site, not down the road.
Right, because it's already overhead down the road, so they would tie into the existing. They wouldn't take down the existing electricity. They would tie in the overhead down, go under, correct? Because electricity's, now if there's a new subdivision road being built, that's a different issue, but this is, they're not building the road. They're tying into existing utility.
Currently, state now exceeds a subdivision plan.
No.
No.
It exceeds the Class Six and Private Road policy that the selectmen have. They because you're looking at, oh, it might meet the twenty-foot.
It does meet.
It does meet the twenty-foot?
Measured today.
Yeah.
Mark and you measured it.
And you could have a report from Mark saying that it has it, so you guys feel comfortable that it is?
I could understand if there are thirty houses going in. Then you would really want a major road.
Right.
Correct.
The bulk of the traffic is gonna come from the people further down.
That are already using the road, that are not gonna change it, and.
But we're just talking about this guy and maybe a relative that.
And they already have associations set up.
Ah, I know.
Yeah, they're.
That's why I think the current situation requires a waiver.
Yeah, and the other thing you could have.
Looked at it today and he would certify.
So you could do along what the selectmen did as part of that thing to build it to that road standard is to make it, you'll grant a waiver based on the condition that that lot becomes part of the association for maintenance of the road, and similar to what the selectmen's policy is.
They had to register that.
Well, if it's put on the plan as part of this approval, then it becomes binding. They wouldn't have to register it. Registering thing is because there's no subdivision plan to make it binding. That's why the selectmen have their policy, because this plan, subdivision plan gets recorded with that note on it. So that's the same idea as recording something that was part of subdivision.
So my knowledge, you have the twenty feet. Did he suggest it needs topping or anything?
Needs a few things. He said the pots, you know, it's it's forty-something years old. We're got plowed over from the winter. You know, I told him I have a tractor. I'll clean the debris and push away a lot. I could actually do the hot pot. It's only two hundred feet down to the driveway at that point. And he did say he might need a little ditching. He was, he was.
No cove, he expired or anything?
Yeah. You just follow what the driveway is, and then you follow just below it.
There's gonna be.
The HOA really just deal with the houses beyond, down by the lake, further in?
On this too.
It would, he would.
So were they gonna offer to contribute to this?
No, he, I went to one of their meetings. He would be part of the HOA at that point. And their biggest cost is plop privately.
Sure.
Plowed, but, you know, they actually maintained the road very well. I've ridden on a lot of dirt roads around here, and this is as good a road as any other around, that's for sure.
Well, it seems like the underlying thing with the Class Six and Private Roads is to get fire and rescue there.
Right.
Be wide enough.
Right, right. There's a couple turnarounds at the other end.
Flat at that point, right, until you get further downwards. Would it next down?
Yeah, and there are turnarounds before you hit the hot top. There's one, and then there's one down further. So they've always tried to meet the regulations at the HOA. I think, unfortunately, the person who wants to buy the land is out of the United States today, so I need to get ahold of him, and we're just trying to find out what his total cost would be. Because since the conception, his builder has gone up three times. So he's really trying just to get a handle on the cost, and that's the only, that's the reason. Just so we can relay that. It could happen type of thing.
You got the direction, Eve?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, we're so late. Sorry, everybody else.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Next item on the agenda is driveway tactical, looking for. We're just looking for an extension of the.
Extension?
We did get our final permit the other day from DOT. It's a draft one, but like that. So we're just looking for the extension of the approval that runs out, I think, August first. That's all we're looking for.
Pretty routinely, good extension.
Yeah. It's completely there, since they've been working, talking with Scott and what they still need to do. The reasonable.
Anybody got any questions? Yeah, I mean, given the whole agenda and the heat, maybe we get you out here quick. Now, do we have a?
We have another one.
We have a formal language for the question, just a question. Is that, certain conditions or just? Public comment, thank you. Okay, so one-year extension on approval?
On the conditions of approval.
And conditions.
There was a couple of conditions. One was DOT approval. They've got, basically, they just got bonding to meet that, which is, you ended up granting, doing the same thing once the fund for the town hall is the subdivision going in there? Because they had the same thing. They had the state approval, and the only thing that was holding back the final approval was the bonding, and they're at the same point on this one. You granted that way. There was another condition you had that the selectmen had to authorize the work in the Class Six road portion. This can't transfer the, they can't write the easement to the town until this subdivision gets approved. So the conditions should probably be changed to be that you need the planning board's approval for work in the right-of-way before construction starts. And it shouldn't be part of this approval, because you gotta have this approval for the land to get transferred, easement to get transferred to the selectmen, so the selectmen can authorize the work done in the road, you know, so.
Okay, so the condition. That's the work on the road, the selectman or is that us, John?
The selectmen does, because of the right-of-way in the Class Six road.
Okay.
So with that said, the condition that was done was they have to get permission from the selectmen first, but the selectmen can't give them permission first. So that condition should be changed to read that. You got it, ready?
One-year extension.
I know that it was like short notice for the board, but that was to amend their current notice of decision. Like John was saying, that it reflects more the select board to authorize work in the road right-of-way before construction, no? It's different. I mean, it's the same.
So basically, if you made that modification in the conditions of approval, you wouldn't have to extend it, because that would be the new conditions and the time would start now. I guess.
Okay, so we could either give a one-year extension on the conditions of approval, or we can change.
Change these conditions, and then they have the one year to meet their new conditions, which is it's basically gonna, it's
I mean, if we.
But you don't want them to have to come back because of the language now. It'd be easier to fix the language now. So why have them come back to another meeting to fix the language? You can fix it now, and then that would be all fixed, and then we did it now.
Why don't we just give them a one-year extension, all conditions and, you know.
Well, you would have to change the note, you would have to change your notice of decision tonight to that wording to make it clean.
So if you look at
That's what I'm saying.
And the conditions precedent, item number C, said add a note referencing the select board's approval for work on the Class Six road. Change that wording to select board to authorize the road right-of-way before construction.
Okay.
And that was out of such on the thing they have an easement. Fund reward for that.
And the plan would have to be signed, so really, just a note in the plan that this has to be done before construction starts. Not for approval. Actually, it's not gonna be a waiver. It's just gonna be a notice, a change.
Change of the condition.
Notice of decision for amendment.
Yes, yes, okay. Five's notice of decision.
Any other questions? Open for public comments? Anybody remote?
Is there anybody on the phone that would like to speak to this case? Please raise your hand or mute yourself, which is star six.
Closed public comment, Harry and I. All right, Vanessa, I'm gonna ask you to propose the waiver language. The amendment to the notice of.
The notice, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The notice of decision is amended today on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two to change item C in the conditions precedent from the original notice of decision on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two from add a note referencing the select board's approval for work on the Class Six road to today's amended notice of decision for the select board to authorize work on the roads right-of-way before construction. What the amendment says in this also, just to note, if all precedent conditions are not within twelve calendar days, months to date, that July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, boards of approval be considered a lapse unless we feel agreed upon extension granted by the board.
So.
So you get granted a one-year extension as well with this.
Okay, so.
But you also wanna make it so that their DOT was approved with the notice that supplied. They gave a notice that they gave you conditional approval of their curb cut, which is what you accepted on another one, but they don't have full DOT approval until they do bonding, but you've allowed a letter of commitment from DOT to stand before where that notice of decision said they had to have the permit in hand, and they can't get the permit in hand without bonding.
All right, now I'm confused again.
There was two, there was two issues.
Well, so now I wanna add it back to him.
Well, you know, it's, well, it sounds like we also need an extension.
They originally came in the press extension. These two things had come up about the.
But let me ask, if we change that condition precedent, and it expires the same time, they're still in a bad place. We gotta give them an extension on that, right? So you gotta give them an extension and change the condition precedent.
If you change those conditions, those two conditions, they never have to come back. If you don't change those two conditions, they're coming back, is what I'm saying. Even if you give them a one-year extension, they gotta come back so you can approve those changes.
Well.
Do you want me to add that they're talking adding the note?
Yeah, so the DOT, so that, basically, it's gonna be a consensus of the board that you feel that the letter of commitment from DOT meets the requirement for their curb cut.
Okay.
Go ahead and get it.
Down on your knee.
Once they have bonding, they get it. We ended up doing that with that with signature drive and stuff goes in. They had to do the same thing, because they had that whole thing with DOT there. It was that same type of issue where they needed the plan approved to do the work and get their bonding in place from their financing. And at the same time, they couldn't get that, because the plan wasn't approved, because you were waiting for the bond to be in place for DOT. You know, so it's kinda.
Okay, let's, I think I hear you, John. One thing is Vanessa. So let's hear the motion again, Vanessa. Make sure we're okay.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna read both or the second one that we.
Yeah, let's read the whole thing over again.
Okay. So the original notice of decision, conditions precedent, there's number one, A through C, number two, number three, number four, number five. What we're here tonight is to amend condition precedent one, C, from the original notice of decision of adding note referencing the select board's approval for work on the Class Six road to the new amended condition, the select board to authorize work in the roads right-of-way before construction. This is to add to the following plan notes on the final supplemental. And adding in addition to the new, um, I'm sorry, not the new, the amended notice of decision is a letter of commitment from D O, from N H D O T for the approval, um,
For the curb.
Meets your requirements for the curb cut.
All right, so moved. Second. I'm, I. I took Vanessa's language and moved it. All right, buddy, we'll start with you.
We started discussion already, and I couldn't, uh, exceed myself from this, so.
Okay.
I'll go then.
All right.
Tess, you're right.
All right.
Everybody said I accept what he said.
Wow, he's recusing himself.
He's recusing himself.
Recusing himself. Potential conflict with.
You guys are all set. You got to yeah to meet those.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Well, as long as you fix it, doesn't mean.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question. Andy Knapp can be here. He did leave comments for certain actions tonight. Would you like those added?
For the, for the last one?
For any of, I mean.
Yes.
So for, um, six, well, six A one has no issue.
Well, let's, let's, let's move on to two.
Okay, two.
Start discussion of, uh.
You got to represent.
Okay. Um.
Thank God. Just here to request the extension for the year on the subdivision. Subdivision has been subject of litigation since the approvals. We've had discussions, our, my attorneys had discussions with, uh, Laura Specter Morgan, um, and they both that this was sexually in advance each day that it's in litigation. Extends the date another day, but we figured it was best to just go ahead and request the year.
Any comments on the questions of the board? Um, Andy, you had some comments?
He did. Um, I'm just bringing this in the record as the town planner. Um, I have no opinion your way on this. I just want to let everybody know that ahead of time. This is six A point two is the application number from Andy Knapp, Chair of the Planning Board, who is not able to make it tonight. I would request that the board consider denying the extension, but based on my requests that received the application originally. I vote, originally, I voted against it. My original vote, which was later acknowledged as the correct vote. I would also draw the attention to the board that a call with John and Vanessa with the attorney didn't remember making a recommendation to approve the subdivision. Based on two witnesses in the call with the attorney, is my suggestion denied extension the ground. Attorney has changed her story claiming she did not provide guidance to the board. Thus making it consistent in my original vote to deny that subdivision.
I don't remember him coming out against us.
Him and, um, um.
He done it.
He done it. Both voted against it.
And what was the reason for that?
Because the right of way was for two lots going through someone else's property. And the original subdivision said one, for one lot. Oh, yeah, yeah, that was the fight board against.
Just so that you know, this is already, the subdivision was already affirmed in Superior Court. And, uh, the butter appealed it to the Supreme Court. So this was, this was affirmed al- already, the subdivision as completely valid and legal in Superior Court.
Well, that's for the, uh, for the access though, right? That was the question whether the access, they had access rights with the change of ownership, wasn't it?
Well, that was the two people that voted against its arguments.
Yeah.
The court upheld that. That wasn't anything that was justifiable in their decision. And as far as your extension goes, you have legal standing. What, what ordinance or regulation has changed that would affect this moving forward? And you, you would have to have justification to say no, you know, based on what ordinance or regulation type of thing, so.
I mean, I, I don't like it. I think we've made a mistake in the past.
A mistake in the past doesn't work because they got a thirty-day appeal period, and that's gone.
Okay, but I think, I look at it the other way, John. We need justification for our extension. We don't need justification to not grant an extension. We routinely granted extensions, so I think you're right. It would be atypical of us to.
Without a good reason.
Not arbitrarily, yeah. Yeah, I think you're right there. Based on past practice, I would think.
You would have to have a good reason, I would think.
Yeah, I would say so. Um, any other questions, comments? Open to public here, public comment?
Robert, can you check if there's any, any raised hand or?
Public comment, hearing on a closing public comment. Um, I make a motion that we grant a one-year extension for application two, three, nine, dash, one dot, one, dash, T C, dash, twenty-three, dash, two. Twenty-one, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Twenty-one, dash, two. Dash two. All right. All right, so. Yes.
Happy hour.
Just go away.
India, am I?
Tess, you're right.
All right. All right, moving on to item three. Sunrock LLC.
Good evening. Mike Wright with Spec Engineering, representing Brock's Industries. Uh, we are requesting a one-year, uh, extension. Uh, when we were approved in February of twenty twenty-two, uh, we went and took our application to, um, the New Hampshire D E S A O T. We met with them in advance, presented all our plans, discussed our, um, everything that we were going to do. And we had about an hour-long meeting. Everyone was in agreement. We were leaving, and the D O T at the time said, hey, uh, just so you know, a lot of people messed this part up, but, um, when you submit, make sure that your, uh, wetlands application to the fishing game has everything within a year. And we, we were, oh, yeah, we did this. We, we've got that, no problem. And I went back to the office and realized we started this process here in twenty twenty of, uh, I think it was November, was our first meeting. And we had our wetlands and all that done, and we were approved by February, so we were actually now out of the time limit for fishing games, so we had to redo our fishing game application. And trying to get a wetlands person in April, May, and June is not the easiest to have them come back in and write a report. Uh, we do have that now, and we are submitting the application probably within the week, if not two weeks, but, uh, we won't need to obviously apply for a one-year extension at the moment.
Now, you say, was this approved in February?
I'm sorry, it's approved in January.
January, sorry.
That's okay.
So why are you asking for it now? I mean, it's good to be timely, but a year, a year would be.
Well, so, but, um.
Been six months.
Six months. It was under the old, um.
Okay.
Subdivision regulations. Said it was six months that all of these agree that you were per tonight, Mr. Chairman, and within that.
Now they're one year.
Now they're one year, and the extension will be.
Okay. Understand. Okay, I think, uh, their process took a long time, so I think, uh, give you some time back might be appropriate in my mind, but, uh. Any questions or comments from the board? Any, uh, open for public comment?
Chairman, I'm looking online. I don't see anybody. Is anybody online that would like to speak to this case file? Either raise your hand, click off mute, or you can do star six, unmute yourself.
Harry Nunn, a closed public comment. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant extension.
For case number?
Case number two, thirty-six, dash, four, dash, G R, dash, twenty, dash, S R. Second.
If they have one.
Just go on.
Yeah. Tess, you're right.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Moving on to agenda number B one. Um, I am rock iron repair.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Barry Dyer, once more, yeah, for the applicant. Drawing's open. Right, uh, since our last meeting, we have updated the plans per and the town review engineers' comments on most of the items. Minor in nature. Some of the discussed issues, uh, with the landscape lighting. Uh, we have updated the lighting design that meets the town regulations. I think if we all remember the last meeting, um, it was going to require additional light pole stuff. Have it designed, it's an additional light pole, two instead of one, lights are on the, uh, buildings itself as well. And we added additional landscaping to buy town, uh, foundation, landscaping conditions.
Um, I really think, unfortunately, mine apparently outdated. I only saw one light pole, so. So the revised one.
Should have been dated six fourteen.
I got.
On your revision day, correct? Revision number two.
Is that the?
This is the one I hear.
Actually, I apologize. This does not show one, or this does not show two. It only has one. Made the, we will have to make change to meet that. We have designed it, but I didn't submit. That's.
In no way conform.
I apologize for that.
You knew I was going to change the lighting.
Yes.
And it was awfully inadequate, so it's good to change.
So we have some, um, submitted it back and had C M A look at it. They don't have any issues with lighting currently. Um, so we did have comments from both the town staff and C M A. Um, after the last middle, yeah, we don't have any issue addressing those items. If the sides to include those items in the conditional approval, we don't have any issues with that.
Well, one question I did have, Barry, is on the plan I did have, which is update. Uh, the lighting levels on the expressway were zero.
Um. Say that again.
The lighting levels on the lighting plan that I had were zero on the entryway. And I know you had another light pole for the parking area, but it seemed to me that having no light coming up at one twenty-five on the entrance would be problematic to me.
Uh, I guess that's a requires or wishes for us to put, requirement is for the parking area. We kind of discussed that walking back and forth to your car.
Yeah.
If the board wants to have a light pole out near the entrance, um, I don't think it's necessary. The lighting designer doesn't think it's necessary, but.
Pass back us on that, John? We, it doesn't say one way or the other. It's, it's certainly non-definitive.
But typically want to keep.
You don't want to spill all the front of the road.
It says spill, spill into next area in quarter two, it says that.
Right, so to put it right at the end.
Not going to be any pedestrians watching on the road from one twenty-five.
Oh, no, no, no. There, this is not a store where anybody's going to come to.
You're not going to have much traffic.
There won't be hardly any traffic.
Still over, still over on the highways. We already have.
I guess my concern though, John, is, you know, you're coming off twenty-five, a pretty good clip, turn on the, it is not light at all. It's zero illumination. It's going to be hard to make that turn.
And this is one of those.
Got the fancy statues left like here, you know? Guys might be driving trucks. Yeah.
And this is one of those sections on one twenty-five. It's a long straight section, so you really don't see any issue with it. Uh, we are requesting three different waivers. We can go through those if the board would like to at this time. Uh, we're asking for a waiver to section four point seven point seven to allow the minimum depth to cover over storm drain to be less than thirty-six inches. Um, we were considering just utilizing A D S. Um, after speaking with C M A, they did suggest that we go to R C P, which we will do that if the board liked it, would still be less than thirty-six inches, but to reinforce concrete pipe instead of, uh, H D P. Uh, the second one is to section four point nine, seven, one, which is to allow gravel parking and drives. Uh, site plan regulations, I'm not certain that we require a, um, a waiver to this because if we're less than twenty parking spaces and it isn't regular, isn't necessarily used five days a week, then the site plan regulations indicate it doesn't necessarily have to be paved, but we are asking for it because, uh, just to be clean, really. Um, we like to, to have gravel drive and parking, and so we are requesting that waiver. Um, and the third one was to section four point seven point one, one of the site plan regs to allow minor calculated increase in the post-development rate of runoff over the pre-development rate of runoff. Um, per our calculations, which have been reviewed by C M A, the two-year twenty-four-hour rate of runoff from the site increases slightly over the pre-development rate. Um, this is one of those times when the, the calculations don't show everything in reality. Because all of our, um, area that we're impacting is directed to our detention basin. And our detention basin discharges no storm water in the two, ten, and twenty-five year storm events. It's all infiltrated. But we still show an increase. It's just the way the calculations work. It only happens in the two-year minor. Um, C M A has reviewed it in our, I don't want to say endorsing it, but they were okay with it. And those are the three wa- waivers that we're requesting.
Well, for me, I think the waiver that I am having trouble with the most is the, uh, waiving the paving requirement. I mean, this, we want to push all our commercial development to one twenty-five. It's kind of a, you know, we want to see it. It's very visible. It's an uphill slope. I think setting a precedence for gravel on, you know, on the major thoroughfare. Having trouble with that.
Well, I would disagree. If you look at four point nine eleven one, under paved surfaces for parking areas. Parking areas that include one, include lanes for driveways, windows, or two, contain parking areas that are required to have more than twenty parking spaces and then are used regularly at least five days per week shall be graded surface with asphalt. That can be waived, but we have, I believe it's thirteen parking spaces required, and this is a, um, company that isn't necessarily at the office every day. They typically are, um, nine parking spaces, excuse me. They're typically site doing the work required. They, uh, pair, uh, large plants, concrete plants, crusher plants, asphalt, that nature, which necessarily they have to be on site to do. It's a very small number of employees and they go to the site. Uh, so they're not necessarily there. So I believe under that requirement of four point nine eleven one, you don't even meet the requirement for paved parking. So like I said, I, my view is that we're allowed to do gravel, but we are asking for the waiver just to be clear and clean.
You're saying twenty parking spaces and you regularly give you the exemption. Justifies the waiver.
Correct.
You say you're going to get a waiver.
And, and given the use and number of spots, I would have no problem with the waiver.
Yeah, the only thing I have is, you know, it's right on one twenty-five, it's not visible, but I think the most fair reading of the regulations, I think, probably right.
D O T is probably going to require something active, or it needs the road for their entrance, which is nothing to do with the parking.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we do show.
Yeah, show that.
Which is what you're, you're on your one.
Right, we have a forty-foot paved apron coming in up, and then we have a lot of trees, um, closed landscaping that's going to block the rest of it. Then we have a lot of trees, um, closed landscaping that's going to block the rest of it.
He runs. Is the entrance to the town, but the regulations are the regulations. Want to do that.
Yeah.
It looks cleaner and neater and.
We're trying to push all the commercial.
Feel, right.
This is what it all wants to be, and I think we want to make it look good, so.
It doesn't affect this application that I. Time comes to change it.
I think that.
Forty-foot apron coming in, the trees blocking, you really want to kind of see the dirt on one twenty-five anyways, if you're looking at curve.
Right, and it's five feet above the roof.
Yeah. Well, slopes up, right, so, you know, you're going to see the gravel. But. We already have one that's, you know, Liberty Trucking's got a little bit of gravel up. Right in the front there too, but they're paved the rest of the way. So I think with John, I think I don't like the exemption, but uh, it sounds like it.
Cool, right.
It is what it is. Don't like it, but that's before.
So is that a motion, Mr. Chair?
Um, I think I got the pass on motion now. But, so we got three, right, we got the uh.
Yeah, four point seven point seven three is the uh, the storm drain depth of cover.
Who's right inside, right?
The waiver?
Perfect, read it. Read them, we probably should do them one at a time.
Um. The question waivers from the applicant. Number one, the requirement to allow the minimum depth of cover over storm drain line to be less than thirty-six inches per section. Four point seven point seven point A C three of the site plan review regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intention on the regulation.
Now, we, we wanted, had that motion with RCP though, right?
Correct.
So we want to, want to put in the requirement for RCP. Reinforced concrete pipe. Condition of that approval.
So, I mean, a condition of approval or adjust the waiver?
Adjust the waiver, so.
Okay.
It's in the waiver. Um. But use the, but use reinforced concrete pipe.
Storm drain line.
Storm drain line.
Forced concrete pipe less than.
We'll go below thirty-six inches, but require the use of reinforced concrete pipe. That location. Couple of comments later.
You can address the waiver.
Yeah, and then you can.
Did everyone, did everyone get that waiver request? Okay, so moved, second?
Second. Round out a second.
All right, buddy, you going to go for us again?
Happy yellow.
That's your right.
Al right.
Thank you very much.
So what's the next one?
The next waiver request from the applicant. The requirement to allow gravel, gravel parking and drives per section. Four point nine point eleven, point fifty-one of the site plan review regulations. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to certain intentions.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Hello.
Kathy yellow.
Still. Well, you're here tonight, I. Tessie right.
Al right.
Thank you very much.
All right. The requested waiver from the applicant number three. The requirement to allow minor calculated increase in the post-development rate of runoff. Over the pre-development rate of runoff per section point seven point one, one of the site plan. Regulations. Granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. Granting the waiver would not be contrary to your intention of the regulation.
So moved. Second?
I'll second, I'll second. Put the action.
I can I?
Kathy yellow.
Just go out. Andy I, Tessie right.
Al, Al right.
Yeah, thank you all very much. Um, so we, we are in receipt of the draft notice of decision, the planner wrote up. Uh, like I said before, we have enough to choose the wishes to, those conditions. You can meet all the conditions, we actually have made the changes, we just didn't want to submit them to you because we wouldn't add two weeks that the board likes to have. Well, I would rather the, on the notice of decision with the conditions as written. Um, I don't know if there's a reason for us to come back, I think we've addressed all the issues.
Didn't see the lighting plan, didn't see, didn't see the renderings of the drawings I had. So.
Did submit building renderings?
The package I had, I didn't see it. So the problem I have is the package I have doesn't meet the requirements right now, I know you submitted some new stuff, but I haven't seen it.
Uh, I mean, if you want us to come back, we can, I think it'll waste the board's time, but. That's up to the.
Give something you can put up there.
Is it not?
No, if you need.
I didn't get.
Sharing.
Get the update.
Six fourteen twenty-two?
I'm sorry?
Did he, I thought he had the six fourteen.
Yeah, okay.
One, one.
Well, like a one.
Okay.
That's above the high of the highest level, you know what I mean, so it's nowhere near. So that one. But, saying it's compliant, but I haven't seen it, so, I mean, I'm pressed to say yay, doesn't, I haven't seen. Think.
Um.
Not certain, it's not sharing.
Open that public comment.
Oh yes, just do that. Public comment?
Anybody on?
Closing public comment. Uh, for approval now, I mean, I haven't received the stuff that says it's compliant, so. I have a problem saying yes tonight, yeah, I'm sorry. I don't trust you.
Oh, I mean, obviously it's up.
The customer verify.
Um. I think that you do have competent, um, staff and CMA that could review those. And tell you that, sure, there we go. That they meet the criteria of the, uh, but again, up to the, so. It's typical steel building. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Sixty by fifty-eight, um, though. See where one side has double doors, uh, with the man door. And the other side, uh, has a single man door. The lights are, two lights on the outside. Um, at twelve feet high, one at the center on front and back, twelve feet high.
So you're asking for approval, but with the condition that CMA review the package and make sure it complies with.
Yeah, the, the notice of decision that was drafted by the planner basically covers all the items that were left outstanding.
Okay.
I think I just have the, uh, now I have the, the current set that's in front of the.
Um.
This is. Okay, I see, I see light levels included in there.
Yeah, it's under number two J. Joker.
Well, I guess for, for the board, we have a draft notice of decision. Number two is the add to the plan. There's a lot there. There's a lot there. It's on there. Yeah, it's on there. That's a consensus of the board, I guess, looking for. Given notice of decision, unconditionally approved.
What are you missing?
It's, it's a, it's a long, oh, it's a long list of things.
Yeah, I got.
Right, see that, you know, add to the plan that is a. Hold me down a queue for things to fix. So there's a long list of. Changes, updates.
To get that you read, does any of them, staff can? That, that's what I'm looking at, they all look like minor stuff that.
Um. I will, for the board, I'll read the, uh. Add the following to the plan. Uh, six, uh, nine point six special tunnel was granted. Final plan signature of the wetlands, scientist needs to certify the final plan with signature and a seal of the final approval. Final plan owner signature needed. Final plan signature of wetlands, scientist needs to certify final plan with signature and final approval. Land survey needs to certify final plan with, uh, signature and seal of a final approval. DOT access approval number. Uh, DES F T C approval number. Um, at three point five seven of site plan review regulations. Address section four point nine point seven, thirty-six. Stockyard fenced, the screen parking. Address four point twelve point two, which is lighting levels. Four point fourteen, addressing five thousand square feet of residential floor space. Part, uh, at a short traffic, pack analysis. Did I see that, I saw that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, I clarified, he asked us to, um, extend it, increase it a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, try to get back on one twenty-five.
And it was like two cars a day.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think so, I mean, it's a requirement, but.
Right.
Not a change, it's not a change. Um, pre and post development drainage plans, O and M plan, culverts. Um, rip rap, segmentation four days, et cetera, do we have that, I didn't see that.
Yep, well, it's in the drainage calculations.
Uh, sediment loading. Um. Sheet one, existing conditions planned, legend should be updated, remove items that are not applicable. C two site plan. One half, uh, phase one half limit is shown going through building two, number two. There are numerous leaders that are not pointing at anything or pointing the wrong way, wrong item, the wall radius is the wrong location. Um. E, the landscape and lighting plan needs to demonstrate compliance. Um, Q, drain, uh, trench detail. Shows two foot minimum cover over a pipe. Over the, this is what gets, with the waiver, just the right way, they were there. Then outstanding fees, stuff like that. So there's a lot, I guess maybe. I guess Joe trying to question John's doing, could staff handle this?
I mean, it seems like all housekeeping stuff on the plan, so.
See, well, I think more important is.
Six months, wasn't it?
I mean, it's not like it's.
Go decision.
Right, yeah, notice it just being made, as long as they're done, they're done. So.
If they're not done, then they have to come back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, we have a draft notice of decision, I guess, is.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I thought I put item C and D, the exact thing.
Yeah.
Five strokes for that.
We can change.
One of them.
We have a draft. Initially approval notice. Something to change, I changed. The waivers are granted, John.
Mm-hmm, I have add the following plan to note the three waivers that we add into the record. Right, I didn't know if you want me to read in the record.
Yeah. So I think Bob is saying that he thinks you're kind of housekeeping, I was going to go there, yes or no, they kind of agree with that, so. It's not like this, this question that on our part, if it's, if it's met, it's met. So.
It'd be really hot now, just. Excellent, John.
Shouldn't be excellent, but it is.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification first off, um. The last item here.
Mm-hmm.
We are wanting to. Um, I put that on there because it was a note from CMA.
Yeah.
The chairman like me to, or the board like me to delete that, um, since his address and the waiver.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion, we can usually approve application. Two six five dash eleven and twelve dash R C dash twenty-two dash S R. Subject to, subject to the conditions in the draft notice.
So I will second that.
Kathy yellow.
What's the one?
Tessie right.
Al right. So.
Thank you all very much.
She's got the, she's got the, uh, decision, so you can get it. I'm speeding it out, I was supposed to read it out, but.
Uh, most of them say as, you know, per the.
Yeah.
So I think you covered, thank you.
Okay. You can serve it quick.
Um. The chairman and to the board, what, to clarify for staff or, um, do we look at the regulations, that's a four point nine eleven? Um, waiver that he was asking for to maybe change that?
I think for consideration of the future, yeah.
It was that one, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I thought so, but thank you.
Before you confirm. Was that it, John, for sure? Yeah.
Formant law gravel parking and drives.
Four point nine eleven. That was it? Okay, yeah. All right, so next. Um. Those changing, this is a, the change of use for the Commerce Way. Add retail. Anybody here to speak to that?
They're already building?
Yeah.
Anybody online? Check online. Anybody online here for the, um, action I am for new application? Change of use to add retail on twenty-six Commerce Way? Please unmute yourself, car six, or raise your hand if you need assistance.
Because of confusion from one meeting, he knew something. End of the night, if you're not, you may just make sure. Might be some misunderstanding.
Okay. All right. Um. Next item is, uh, conditional permit for an event venue, uh, Cavalli.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good. How are you? Yes.
Ryan Cavalli. Uh, owner at Union Lake Orchard. And I'm part of Cavalli. And, uh, so I see, um. Yeah, conditional permit was a, then I'd just like to know.
Actually, do you mind holding on one moment?
Sure.
Tap a pen, please, because I think his presentation is still on the screen.
Oh.
For the previous case.
That checks it?
Oh, you got it.
Uh, so, um, we'd like to know, uh. What questions the board has and, um, or to proceed.
Want to just briefly describe what you're gonna be doing, you know, so that. Online of what's going on here.
Sure. Um. So we're proposing adding a use to, uh, the. The Orchard. Uh, at one seventy-eight. Young Road, um. We're adding a use to a barn there. Uh, to have weddings and, um. Other events, parties. And. The initial intent was to, um, do weddings on Saturdays. It was like weekend rental. We have had requests for specifically Friday wedding for next year. Considering that as an option. Um, so then weddings, uh, Friday and Saturday also had significant interest for. Back parties and birthday parties, so. Couldn't try to do those things during the week, you know, smaller events that, that wouldn't, um. That wouldn't impact traffic significantly. Um, we had a request here for, uh, days, the days and hours of operations. So. Uh, right now, we're considering doing weddings, um, Friday and Saturday, uh, Friday night. Um, I think at three, three P M. to ten P M. And Saturday, um, ten, ten A M. to ten P M. We don't expect weddings to be there at ten, but. Give them the option if somebody wants another wedding. Um, and then for smaller events during the week, you know, with four P M. to eight P M. Something like that. So Sunday, Sunday through Friday.
I'm sorry, Friday was three P M. to ten P M.?
For a wedding, yes. If it's gonna be something smaller at the time. At the hours. But i- i- in general, that's what we're looking at is a. An event per, per weekend in the rental contract. If you review that, I believe we have it. So it's a three-day rental. There's a setup the day before. There's the event day, and then there's the takedown the day after. Basically looking at a day. Large event.
Could you explain this stuff that you had done for parking last time you were here? Since you were about to park and you had that look back.
Site distance for parking?
No. So you had their analysis done?
Yes.
You want to describe what you come there and what you did. That to make those say.
Uh, so, uh, the. Uh, civil works, the. The, um. Engineering firm in Dover.
Trap.
They, they came up and did a, they did measure site, just to stop along the driveway. They made some recommendations for, um. Cutting back some trees and, uh. The earth, rocks and stuff, uh, on the north side of Young Road to improve site distance, I believe, to. Seventy, two hundred and seventy-two feet. It's in here somewhere.
And I started, you've agreed to do it.
What's that?
You've agreed to do it.
We've already done it on the north side. And, and they've also, uh, made it suggestions for the south side of the driveway. To remove some rocks and, uh. Cut down some underbrush, which we've already done as well. And then after that, we still had two large trees on site triangle. We put a waiver for that. I believe we have a. Prove for that waiver to, um, have those two trees remain there.
Wait, who approved that?
Um, I believe so.
Wait, I'm sorry.
He said he got a waiver.
A waiver.
You have a waiver.
Granted a waiver.
Rest, okay, okay.
And did a waiver for those.
The board will approve any.
Okay.
Have submitted. So yes, they.
Oh, so granted, it is not. Okay, now those, I, I pages were kind of screwed up, but I saw that there was. Quite a long list of concerns from the road agent. Yeah, you've seen that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it would look like one pretty verbose concern, but, uh.
About runoff of the, the gravel drive.
Yeah.
I didn't notice. Gravel. Layered. Most of the. You're gonna pave part of the road.
If it's a requirement from the board. I, I believe we're going to do it in the future regardless, um, but.
Just a lot of the gravel you added. Going to soak it down.
Right.
Like, build up the. Color, the rail.
Hmm. Yes.
You know, he has more. Just, but you put some swales in. Died your driveway. But, uh. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Uh, so the. The, the swales, I don't know if is. Option running all the way down the driveway because we move heavy equipment across that lane. So, um. It would have to be something.
Yeah.
Um, the. The, the event venue use is subordinate to the. Agriculture. So it's, we need to be able to get stuff across it. Uh, we'd be willing to work with them to. Figure another solution that isn't paving the entire driveway.
Generally give a lot of weight to staff recommendations, so. It would be good to address that.
Yes.
I would probably suggest a condition subsequent that you. The future.
I mean, we'd absolutely be willing to. We don't like our driveway washing away either, so.
Oh, okay.
Can you come up to that? Things not gonna pick you up if you have to come up to the.
I think he's part of the application.
Oh, yes.
And Cavalli.
First place the divert for the driveway. And it directs quite a lot of the water from the very top of the hill, right out into the orchard. And we intend to do the same maybe halfway down the driveway, or may, if it takes more, we could probably put two diverters in there. Help eliminate that problem.
But we'd be willing to. Yeah, just. If that was, if that turned out.
The other thing that needs to be addressed, this will surprise nobody. Lighting plan, you didn't get a lighting plan this Saturday. You have a. We have an event at night. Need a lighting plan, and the lighting plan can't be just showing the fixtures. You gotta show where they are. You gotta have a photometric plan. I mean, you better, it's gotta be provided.
Okay.
I'll finish this application when they came in for their conceptual. You said that portable lights, something that. By they have that portable solar lights. Where they hold them very much. I know. I'm just telling you what the.
I mean, it's, it's pretty hilly and, you know. You gotta show where the, the leg levels are. There's nothing, nothing in darkness. They show the fixtures, but you gotta show how high they are. Where they're located and the light levels on the parking areas. Is it forty-foot illumination radius? Okay, I missed that one.
Looks like you have eight lights, right? The lighting from the parking, the main parking along the roof, the entrance. I guess it is gonna be where you have the ramp. The building.
Yes, yes.
Seems, um, probably around the D box or the septic tank you're showing us the plan. Just seems to lack lighting there. Getting from the parking lot over to the ramp, building. That just seems to be a dead spot with no lighting. You do pretty good lighting on the parking area. See where I'm.
Yes, yes. So there's lighting on the front of the building.
Right. I noticed lighting under the hang.
Yes.
Nating ramp. I guess I'm looking from that distance from.
So generally, how we would have that lit is we just have string lights, like the decorative.
Something there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Um, well, in lighting, entry you have, which is required.
Yes.
Put lights on the front, on the running as well. So they have to be located on the. You put any lights on the building, it has to show on the run.
Up under an hunting, you want a section. You want a section through the.
Was, was this in there? Right there. Okay.
Had a question. Question, Tom, you said, uh.
Yep, he's already come through and done inspection.
With the other. Let's start with the birthday party, because birthday party bring in lighting.
We can, we can, we will put that. There, there's a strict, uh. Policy in the contract. There's no lighted flames anywhere.
Structure.
The barn's not heated, so it's. We, we won't be holding any events past. Three season, the beginning of October. Yeah, right.
I had a question on the upper parking lot. Just the position of it. I'm wondering why it's not furthest down. But the, uh, topography indicates it's much flatter.
Uh, there are.
Stay away from the well radius, or?
There are trees there. Existing orchard.
In the path from that additional parking area down to the main event, it'll be using the road, but pedestrians will be walking up.
Yeah, it, it's all, it's all grass.
Oh, great. Oh, I see.
That's, that's.
Parking directing people.
Yes, that's managed, managed parking, yeah. Many people available to do that, so it shouldn't be hard to find. All right.
Any other questions or concerns from the board? I think so. Yeah, I think so. Um. Open for public comment? Anyone in the audience or online? Both public comment? Oh, yeah. Um. Lately, I make a motion we set the application as complete.
Second.
Who's the second?
Andy.
Andy, um, I mean.
Happy hour.
Justin. All right. All right, so. I mean, I, I, to me, the big thing lacking is, is. Is lighting. There's a, there's a table in the chart. It's low, medium, high. You gotta pick the one you wanna make a case for, and then you have to prove. Yeah, the chart that shows the, the foot candles at the surface. Call that a photometric study. That's. Particularly we have a traffic at night and stuff like that. I think that's important. That is, not adequately. We show the pictures and stuff, but you gotta have a photometric. The other question you come up with?
The rest of the board wants a lighting plan too, because that's just a little opposite of what you told them.
I could go without a lighting.
What did we do with the other folks, folks that use these? You've just accepted the lighting and say the area they're gonna have is gonna be.
Well, they showed the.
They showed the location of where they were gonna put the lights, but they didn't have anything showing.
I think they did. I think they did.
Not on that one. On the wireless one.
But that's kind of gonna be. Just because they are portable lights.
Yeah, because it depends on where they put them.
I feel.
So they could show this whole thing there, and then they could set it up differently the next time your lighting is gonna keep changing every time they set it up.
Right.
So you can put a plan together that shows everything perfect, but that's not necessarily what's gonna be on the site. It's not like.
Cause you keep raising lower the tower that they're on, so. Yeah, but I think we want to make sure that they have enough lights to meet the requirement. You know, we show a plan that complies. If they don't meet it every time, I, I. You can't guarantee that to go portable lights, but you at least know that they have. They specify ten portable lights, and they're gonna locate them here, and it meets the requirements. To me, particularly we have a traffic at night, weddings with people.
What you're asking them to do is go get a lighting engineer to, for design showing for this, for this particular little, uh. Additional use on an existing business there. That's.
Well, you can, you can, the guys will tell you the lights are often good. You know, you can often get it. No. What's the sense?
Cause it's not by.
To me, I remember looking at the lighting. This is like this. There's no light levels indicated at all. Zero. There's nothing. I'm just not comfortable with that. I mean. You say you got, you got events for people to drink.
Counted seven.
Care in high heels.
Yeah, I think.
But you think it's a safety issue.
I think it's a safety issue.
So I just a question.
Sure.
So there are eight, I only see seven.
It, it looked a lot better on the, on the twenty-six by thirty-four plan, so the.
Like finding Waldo.
Yeah. Six, seven, eight. No, I see eight. Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I mean, you, you want me to.
Eight by the telephone pole.
Why do we need a waiver? I, I say, I'm, you know, well, say, the lighting plan, instead of lighting plan, chose it. We have lots of lights every time.
What, the lights themselves?
If they need a ten to comply. Five. At least a tenant, we got, we got decent chance. Got a decent chance of knowing. Chance to comply, you know what I mean? You don't, you don't have anything, you don't. Show, show me. I think we should. We should approve. Or. If you wanna go another way, we need a favor, but to me. I'd see a plan that complies with the requirements. Some evidence that they're complying with the requirements. I think that's what we're supposed to do. I think as long as you have a plan that says they can comply. What happened, compliance with it in the future is.
So we have, we have a website for the, in the, you know, manufacturer for these lights. We can clearly ask them to get a, get a, um, uh, lighting.
Photometric.
Photometric study.
Photometric study.
On these lights and submit that at a later date, if that's.
That would make me happy.
We'll do our best.
I guess we could do that as long as.
I, I have a, I have a question. Is it possible you could get approval pending the building inspector's inspection of the lighting system or?
Well, that can be a subsequent condition, that it, you submit a plan that complies, and if you look that by staff, and they can approve it, as long as it complies with the regulation. Just like we did in the previous one.
Yeah, but a, a cut sheet showing the rooms going around through, there's a little discretion there. That's where I think you're running into issues, as you're giving us discretion when you.
Well, if you give that chart, it'll give you the maximum and the U vac, the U ratio, right? So that, as long as it's within. It complies with the plan. There, there should be a chart, and then it gives you the min, max, average, and the U ratio. They give you that, you know it complies. So you don't have to look at.
So. But portable lights, I'm not sure they're gonna give us a plan like you just got with that last application. You know, I, you know, I don't break, gonna get that type of plan where it's black and white. This is what you have at this spot. This is what you have at this spot. I don't.
They give you one, there's gonna be a. That's a right. That's where that discretion.
Do you, do you have this? With the plate? Okay.
Well, what happens is. What he's asking for, like she. Every little inch of your parking lot, show how much light on everyone.
Not every inch. Come on, John.
They can show how much.
Oh.
That whole parking lot. And you gotta show that.
What it looks like. This is a preview app.
Yes.
It's, it's, come on, I'll give you.
It's a pretty intense plan. It's not.
This was what the precious. The rock iron guys submitted. This shows the light levels on the parking lot, shows where the lights are indicated, the light levels under those lights, and all throughout the parking lot, what the light levels are.
Okay, so did, did he use the light specs from the manufacturer for that, or did he have someone come through?
Wow.
He had a light guy draw that based on those light specs. It isn't something the light guys.
Depends, you, you're not buying a lot of lights, maybe I might have paid.
So if we, if we take a picture of the parking lot and use the map from the information they gave us with lights, and drew all in hand, getting those numbers.
More complicated than that, because it.
That's a photometric study.
The light projects.
Yeah.
I, I, you could take a shot at it. I mean, you got a chart on the thing, you gotta meet the chart. And so they're gonna ask for max, minimum, average, and U, U ratio. It's just basically the maximum and the max.
This isn't a big commercial operation. Is it necessary to have this?
It's something we're looking for for safety of people who are gonna access your lights.
Well, I realize that.
Because it's a safety issue. So we're looking to protect the, you know. Take the residents of the bar, people who access the thing.
Can you? I'm, I'm just asking this as a. He was okay with that. This is recommended amounts. I can't see where it says it's a required plan for it. Can you show me where it says that?
Yeah, I think it's on. Yeah. It's the, the thing where they got for the renderings and stuff. I do. Well, first of all, it's always required to pass, John. Well, I'll start with the purpose. Establish minimum requirements for lighting for all non-resident persons, including multifamily. This section, section recognizes inappropriate or poorly designed installed outdoor lighting causes unsafe and unpleasant conditions. Limits ability to enjoy nighttime sky and results in unnecessary electric power. So that's the goal. And then the one they're asked for, there's a section that requires the rendering to show. The, uh, lighting on there and the height. It's in there somewhere, John. I can't find it right now. It's in there.
I've looked for it many times, and I've never been able to find it. That's why.
Oh, see it. Okay.
So I can ask what you guys are, what you're reading right now?
Uh, site review regulations.
Yeah, or what, uh, chapter?
Would be chapter four, and like, um, section twelve, lighting designs and standards.
It's, uh, ta- table eight. There's a section that says talks about design submissions requirements. Talks about renderings, resize. The writing is on there. The rendering is not part of the lighting section. It's somewhere else. Yeah, it's, it's, it's different.
More three point eight, page nineteen.
Three point eight four is what you're talking.
Yeah, that's where it talks about the mounting heights and all that kind of stuff. So three point eight under. Site plan. It says, you know, last one is renderings are all relevant buildings showing fixtures, portions of walls to be illuminated, luminous levels of the walls, aiming points for any remote light fixtures, all that kind of stuff. So that's where it is. Pose mounting height of all exterior lighting fixtures. Analysis and illumination diagram showing pose installation of lighting levels in this section. That's where it is. It's not in a lighting section, so. Any other questions or comments? I think you're in a tough spot in that the staff is not feeling comfortable to, to, to check off on the lighting level, so. We can vote on whether. One, board wants to go forward without that or not.
We, we can look at it and do the number things on it, but I still believe there's gonna be some discretion, discretion in that part. And if you guys understand that, and still willing to have us do it, I wanna make sure that. There's gonna be a little discretion, because you got that high and low. So there's, you might have one little area that's not quite high enough, and then you might have one little area that's over a bit. So there's that. If you.
Yes, our town engineers, that was usually really.
Yeah. It's hard to meet if you picked a low one. It's pretty hard to meet, um, because the high, the high level is, is pretty low. So it requires a lot of fixtures. Being one is more providing requirements, but it spreads a little bit. It's, it's not easy to meet. So I, I think at the end of the day, you probably gotta submit something decent and ask for a waiver, probably.
But which you guys would have to grant, not us. That's, that, now you're following exactly where I'm at with it, so.
I mean, I think that for what you're doing, strict conformance with the table eight is. Probably not. You know, probably a little bit burdensome. Um, so you may wanna submit something decent and then ask for a waiver certain parts of it.
I mean, what they submitted was something that's kinda. Showing how they're basically lighting the parking lot, even though it's not a full plan. So I think. Would wanting to waive that section above the requirement of the plan because of the information you have, that would be better than having us try to look at something that's really hard to meet without any discretion, if you know what I'm saying? If you're gonna waive it, and you're saying that you're allowing something a little higher, a little lower, you guys have the right to waive that now. We don't have the right to waive it instead.
I would waive it.
But what are you waiving? What are you waiving?
The requirement to have that, um, illumination plan because you're gonna accept that cut sheet as their lighting.
Well, I, I get a sense that I pass, so. But we made him change the lighting on that bill. I mean, I remember there was a discussion.
Well, I mean, you also have to look at it. It's a liability for us, so if we don't think there's enough lighting, we're just gonna light it up.
Yeah. Well, you have. It's potential explosions too, if we don't. So, I mean, if somebody wants to make a motion, you'll waive it.
I'll make a motion.
Actually, you got some piece of paper, so they could actually make your request and waive that.
That's what I.
Alignment for the cut sheet, because you gotta have. It's gonna be, um, waiver for three point eight on the site review regulations, um, for the illumination plan to accept the touch sheet.
Can they use it on their.
There's not a waiver though.
They have a waiver for the, um.
Oh, they do.
Line of sight.
They wait for the, they go wait for the trees, yeah.
In here.
I, I didn't know if they had, you had to do a check sheet each way.
I don't think they'll wait for that.
Oh.
So they can just, I think if they write one on that and sign it, so the waiver.
Yeah, here's the waiver.
Yeah. So if you just said that, ask them to, well, it's the waiver for the, uh. You can just add it. So it gave down three point eight, your regulations for the elimination plan. To accept the, um, cut sheet in the location shown on the application.
Hold on, hold on. Can I use your paper?
Give me your paper.
I mean, this isn't.
As long as you have the information that's on that and sign it, the board. Be better if you had the form. You could do a thing that the board says you filled out. We're gonna grant the waiver, but we want you to, uh, show waiver request. Do it that way, bro. Do it, they could come in and fill out one of those papers, asking for the three point eight.
Well, what's, what's justification? I mean, not granting a waiver would be an unnecessary hardship, and contrary to the spirit and content of regulations, which I completely don't agree with. You find something else.
That's the one that. But it's up to the rest of the board. It's not up to me. I don't vote.
I mean, I, I think that language goes against accepting the waiver, but that's, that's.
Maybe another instance, we have to look at how we treat portable lights, you know, regulations.
Pretty hard to do a cut sheet on portable lighting. I mean, illumination plan on portable lighting.
How do you do that? I mean, make it, because you presume that that will be permanent. That will be a permanent. But if lights at all, it takes the whole plan.
What do we have to do for?
Well, but that, but, John, I'll, I'll argue that. You're already giving them allowing portable lights instead of permanent lights, and then you eliminate the requirement as well. So if I go with portable lights, I don't have to wa, I don't do anything?
You got the requirement in there.
I don't understand how safety for lighting in a different situation, but.
You don't think you should allow portable lights?
I think, I, I'm okay.
In the regulations.
Just because you, my point is, just because you're using portable lighting doesn't mean you should not comply with any regulations. To me, it should be a stricter requirement. With allowing you to go to portable lighting, you definitely should not waive the requirement.
Right. I guess my point is, it's portable, so the light point. Obviously invalid.
But do you have, do you have any evidence at all that shows the portable lighting plan complies?
Think they brought that as their information. They showed a cut sheet, showed the light. They showed the general location of where they're gonna put the light.
Does it, does it, does it show in any way that it complies with table eight?
They show.
You have zero to show they comply with table eight. So you're going with portable lighting, so there's, well, don't comply with anything, you know? We're gonna, we're gonna let them get away with less expensive option portable lighting, and then we won't, we won't apply the requirements either. We'll just let those go too.
So what did you guys decide on the waiver and how it has to be done?
I think probably the easiest way would be you guys would grant the waiver for the three point eight not requiring an illumination plan based on information provided, and the thing that they come in and fill out, an official.
After.
Waiver request afterwards, because you're granting the waiver tonight, and you gotta be given what the waiver is, as easy as you thought.
You'd have to give me a specific language.
About sixty feet. But you know, I'm not giving.
I know you're not. You don't have to. Someone has to. If that's the board's.
I guess there's a discussion going on there. I don't know if you guys got a majority of that field that's.
Yes, everybody's pretty much on board.
Well, and this can be.
Except for Ron.
So someone would have to make the motion to grant the waiver?
I'll make the motion to grant a waiver for three point eight illumination plans.
Second that.
On what grounds?
On what, yeah, I mean, on what grounds? Like, why are you requesting?
What was that word? That, uh. Language to include the approval, uh, not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
I'd say the way. Isn't it, is it contrary? Don't you have to give like a reasoning?
They just gave the. Not granting.
Okay, it's not gonna happen.
I don't think it's a justice case at all, but. All right, so we have two waivers, right? So we should vote on.
You should vote on separately.
Separately.
You had the motion in the second. Was it Andy in the second or John?
So we should probably vote on that one. We're voting on the illumination waiver.
Illumination plan.
These plan.
The wave, the wave. Wave plan, because you got the cut sheet, lights in the general.
Hi.
That's you, right?
Oh, name. Okay, right.
I do think the board should discuss this in a more theoretical. Form about how we wanna address these.
I don't, I don't want to know, but being against temporary lighting or portable lighting shouldn't be the challenge. The challenge is having enough light that it's safe. So if someone comes up with an option that's solar and it's cheaper, uh, it, that, that shouldn't matter. It's still illuminated.
I agree.
That's safer for the rest of your locker.
Uh, you know, I'm, I totally agree with that, buddy. My point is, you have no evidence that the lighting level is safe. You have, you have, not only do you get a sheet that shows the lighting levels, the foot candles at the surface. We don't have that. So the requirement, the, the evidence to support, to show you meet the requirement is not there.
But if they take it. Or they park all eight of them in the corner.
Well, they may have to at the park.
Well.
Yeah.
So I've, I've, I've done some quick math here. I looked up what the information manufacturer gave us. I've heard it, put candles to lumens, and we meet the medium. So according to the manufacturer, we meet the medium requirement for site, uh, light lighting levels with, uh. The height of lights set at eight meters, which would mean that the light, the meter, the lights could be no further than eighty feet apart. So that's the medium, and I think they're sixty feet apart on the site drawing. So I don't.
We've already granted.
Yeah, the waiver was eighty.
We've already granted. And this is a discussion for future.
Yeah.
So we should move to the second.
If it makes you feel any better.
No, but maybe. Submit that.
Okay. We could do that.
Maybe that's a plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the point. You gotta, I don't, I don't just adequately. It's a requirement to show it, and I think it needs to be done. So I don't, I see, apparently I'm standing alone on the boards. That's fine. All right, so the second waiver is, um, a request for the trees along Young Road, um, to be, remain in place. And language would be not granting the waiver would be posing unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right.
Buddy?
I'm happy.
That's you, right?
All right. Yeah, so the two waivers.
I guess we should vote on whether to approve the application.
Yeah.
Any changes to notice the decision other than the second waiver?
Um. Just as note, the second waiver, they were asking for section four, point fourteen, two, three. But I don't, I'm not sure that that is actually. I wonder if we need to put the. So just turn off our applicants. They were talking about.
Is that the one for the lighting?
From the traffic study.
Is that the one for the trees?
Yeah.
You just granted?
Yeah. Fourteen, four, sorry.
Four, four, dash fourteen, dash two.
Sorry. That's what the traffic engineer had put, um. Do you think it's a reasonable question? Just wanna, um, verify.
That is site distance, the fourteen point, point fourteen, point two, sir.
Yeah, meant to say this is, there was a couple of trees that disrupted it just a little bit, and that's what the waiver was for, because they actually moved stone wall, thing and stuff out to meet it, except for two larger trees because of. A little portion of the car would be hidden. You're still gonna see it coming. Not like.
Yeah, I think.
I was driving in the driveway the other day, and I thought.
You can see where they cleaned it out, and it sort of opened up.
I think.
Especially looking. And it's a walk clear for the people.
That's just looking for the rights.
That person's.
It makes it so you can see, come down on the road and see the car at the end of the driveway.
Probably had a certain condition that no parking.
Yeah.
Oh, we could never, ever even consider that.
He's my note.
Parking on the street in Edmonton anyways. Okay.
One exemption.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure that it's consented with the board. Um, I did not put that as part of, I usually like to reference what section.
Okay.
Trees.
Yeah, okay.
Fourteen.
I think you're right.
Okay, okay.
Site just.
Because I'm gonna read that as part of the, if you guys continue.
Okay. Hey, you wanna, should we vote now?
Time to vote? Should we read the document first?
Should we read the consent first? Prefer anything.
I read the notice.
Okay.
Is there a condition?
Yes, there was.
Three point four, yeah, so you have to address the three point four, what you have asked all things. Three point four, you know.
Yes, in your application. The three point four condition in your application. I don't know how she puts. It's in there somewhere. I would hope, I think. So after the traffic analysis. Right here.
There's, okay, okay. So, unconditional use. So. Category of the end. There have been.
Oh.
General residential. And what are they requesting?
Event space.
Event space. Space. Do I have that comfortable? I don't see events. See events. You know, what are you asking for in conditional use? What? What are you asking for?
I think it was.
No functions either.
Yeah.
You have a list of uses that you guys have.
Yeah, you gotta pick one.
Where does it have us do that?
And probably anyway, so. But under general residential, there's a list of permitted unconditional use, so you're asking for conditional use, so you must feel like your. Your use is not permitted, so. Yeah, it's conditional use, but you gotta pick, right, so what is, fits.
I think when I looked at it with him, it was that conference center, because it's kinda like a place. I don't, because either that or I'm looking like.
They have a conference center, so that's what you think.
Is this also in the site?
No, this is table.
That's the reason why you had to fill out.
Center of facility provides meeting halls, great. For training or other gatherings for large numbers of people similar function.
Do you think that's okay?
Separately or in combination.
That could be why I looked at it that way, which requires a condition, because I think that's the closest thing we had that definition.
I think it's the closest.
Then when I went over it with him, that's why I said you had the three point four. It was so long ago that we had a number we talked about that.
Yeah, I think that's the best fit.
So that's the reason why they need. But also, they got the list of, um. Gotta see if they can. Yeah, the applicant can read the.
You had first use from that case?
I do.
When I'm looking at, that I'm referencing to the board, um. Is that one that you had said?
Describe and detail all existing uses and structures. Since nineteen eighty-four, the property has been a peach orchard supplying fresh fruit at retail sales location, uh, July to September. Uh, the two hundred year old on the park is the original homestead for two gender, my family. It was a site of our farm stand for many years and also used for storage. We have plans in the next two years to rebuild this building to include a state approved kitchen where we make value added products for retail sales and prepare food to serve at farm table events. Uh, the two story gray building is a residence, is, uh, was originally designed by my grandfather to hold a water reserve in the basement water tanks for the orchard irrigation system. Drilled wells located basement. Thirty-eight years ago, when he built the structure, there's three hundred sixty degree view from the second floor, which our whole family has created over the years. In nineteen ninety-five, this structure was expanded and became a present residence for my grandpa. Barn is a newer construction from twenty nineteen, built by, uh, members of, of friends. Its current use includes orchard sale, retail sales, orchard storage, family events, and workspace for orchard and family projects. Uh, under describe and detail the use of proposed uses, uh, I propose to use this barn as an event space for weddings, anniversary. Most large events will predominantly take place May through October. Meetings for smaller groups may be held, may be held in the barn on weekdays during the day or evening, and scheduling may go later into the fall. When there is a barn event, the old farmhouse will become the site of retail sales enclosed when the event. In re, retail sales enclosed when the event begins. No other constructions or modifications are planned at this time. The building, structure, or use is specifically authorized under the terms of this ordinance. By providing a venue in the town of Barrington for events, we feel it is a positive opportunity for people to visit and experience our town and our orchard. With the quiet agricultural and attractive location, we feel it's a desirable addition to our community. We also feel this added use is essential to our farm because we can attract more people to our farm during harvest to farm to table events utilizing our products. In addition, some profits from events go to offsetting the rising cost. Uh, if completed, the development in its proposed location will comply with all requirements of this ordinance and the specific conditions or standards established in this section for the particular building, structure, or use. Use of a barn as an event, as an event space will comply with all the requirements of this ordinance.
Word of how for that?
The building, structure, or use will not materially endanger the public health or safety. The change of use for this property will comply with all public health, safety standards. Public will be protected from equipment, tools, et cetera, used on the farm as they have been when the property is open to the public during harvest season with retail sales. The barn will heal to adhere to all requirements set forth by the building codes and expect, be inspected by the town building inspector and chief fire as, uh, fire, fire chief as necessary. The building, structure, or use will not substantially devalue a budding property. The use of the barn as an event space will not devalue budding property, and we feel the barn structure itself is a welcome addition to the community. The property will be kept as, uh, well kept as always, and events will be. Be controlled. Building, structure, compatible with the neighborhood and with adjoining or budding uses in the, if, in which it is to be located. Feel that the predominantly weakened use of our barn for events will impact our neighbors minimally. The barn is located towards the back of the property and with event activity in close proximity to the barn, we feel the neighborhood and adjoining, adjoining properties will not see this use as a nuisance. Town noise ordinance will be enforced. Um, the building, structure, or use will not have substantial adverse impact on highway or pedestrian safe, safety. Please see traffic study. Additionally, peach customers during our seasonal harvest have accessed Young Road for thirty-eight years, and there have been no traffic or pedestrian related incidents. Since twenty fourteen, our annual peach pancake breakfast, uh, continues to draw more and more people to our property. In twenty nineteen, approximately three hundred people attended this community event in a three hour timeframe, all, all. All accessing the property from, uh. Young Road also without incident. Stone walls and undergrowth on roadside, roadside shoulders have been moved, and some trees removed to mitigate most of the sight line issues mentioned in the traffic study. The building, structure. For use will not have a substantial adverse impact on the natural environmental resources of the town. Events held in the barn will have minimal impact. On the town's natural and environmental resources. Approved lighting will limit light pollution. Trees along Young Road and the orchard trees themselves provide an adequate visual buffer. Again, event activity is confined to inside the barn and the area in close proximity to it, and the nine P M noise ordinance will be enforced. Any large events will be temporary, will have temporary bathroom shower present as well as trash removal by the event customer. Adequate public utilities, community facilities, and roadway capacity are available to the property to ensure that the proposed use will not necessitate excessive public expenditures. Expenditures in providing public services. As per traffic study, we do not see, foresee any public expenditures for increased roadway capacity. Were deemed necessary when considering an application for conditional use approval, the planning board may require that adequate visual buffers be established. We feel the trees along Young Road and the orchard itself provide an adequate visual buffer for the property when used for events. Events will not be visible to any of our neighbors during the summer, other than some exterior lighting during events. However, if the council requires additional. Buffers, we will work to satisfy any additional requirements. Okay, and just to be clear, even though it wasn't mentioned here, initial use we're talking about is for conference center. So that's the category. The category of. Alright, did we do pub comment?
And the one change on this is no, not nine P M, but ten P M.
The, the, the noise ordinance is going to be.
Right.
Kind of.
They will still be able to use the venue till ten P M.
But the noise. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, anything. Will stop at that far.
That is complete?
Did, accept the application. Yeah, just haven't opened up public comment yet.
Okay, so.
They can use a conception.
No, it says. Meeting approved for application reverence.
Yeah, you just. Open it for public comment.
Okay. Okay, so. Any other questions or comments from the board? Open it up for public comment. Here on our line.
Anybody online?
Hearing none and closed public comment.
What? Do you have to vote? She asked me if you had to vote, and I said yes.
I need to read the.
Not voting for three point four.
Oh, yeah, we didn't do three point four yet. Okay, uh. Motion for three point four conditional use for changing the, allowing conference centers, um, at this location. That'd be the, looking for a motion for that. Save some.
I'm motion.
So moved, okay.
Three point four.
Yeah.
To improve three point four.
For conference centers, first, that conference centers. Second, Andy, was that you? Um, buddy?
Happy yellow eye.
That's your eye.
All right. Unanimous.
I made the motion, you second it.
Oh, okay.
He told me to.
I told the pastor. I just gave, I gave him the language.
Now you can order follow up for the application.
Cameron, would you like to?
Yes, please.
We had some discussion, makes, I added some things, did I have it all correct?
You guys have a draft notice of decisions, missing changes, missing kind of vibes, notice of decision.
The three point four conditional use. Granted for the conference center. Um, approved days of the week are. For the conference centers are Sunday through Thursday, four to eight P M. Or Sunday through Saturday, excuse me, from four to eight P M for regular events, for weddings on Fridays at three to ten. Saturdays, ten A M to ten P M. Any changes to site use or operation business require reapplication review by the planning board. The board granted waiver for the trees along Young roadside and traffic study is being. The light line of site triangles remain in place, section four point fourteen, point two, since these three. The board granted a waiver for the three point eight illumination plan. Best of luck on your project. Would like to add.
What do you have here? Changes your comments?
Still thinking about continuing contact with the road agent on.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
Things just to, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
So this would be to approve it, would it be like a?
Would that be sub condition, sub changing? No, we have in the past, though.
Not exactly what has to be done, so.
But in the, we changed our language so we allow. Agent to make recommendations. Without approval, but that change, so this, uh. On private roads, we said the road agent will, on drainage spill, stuff like that, will be the authority, and we.
Young road.
Can make the decisions after you approve.
Wow, that, that class six and private, that's the selectment, selectment papers. This is, um. Looking at full stop on the height. For you to go out and tell them how to. A site.
You allow that on private roads? We, we.
For classics and private road policy, not a site.
It's part of site, we allow them to make determinations on private roads for drainage and spill.
Who has nothing.
We get, we approve something on a private road.
Something in the.
Yeah.
Got all this stuff for the drainage and road design and.
But we changed the regulations to allow the road agent to make recommendations on behalf of the. After the thing was accepted and approved. Subdivision, subdivision?
Well, even the private road, how you doing a private, private road policy, yeah.
This is a driveway?
This is, yeah, this is private property.
Well, you, you know, he had some pretty strong language there, so.
First time I've seen him have seventeen lines of.
Counted them, huh?
That's why I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel the issue of, um, to, to. To, to work with the town, not to have. To do any more detriment, to not do anything that infringes upon Young Road, because then you're putting it on the road agent to maintain. So if you do it that way, but that's not going on site, you know.
On their property.
Right, so. So, you can have a thing.
Spills being filled up.
So you could have a condition that runoff on the property is not to be detrimental to the bank on Young, something like that.
I mean, it's also. You know, it's, it's runoff including sediment, which is fogging up the swells. Runoff and, and sediment.
And actually. By right, because I've had it a couple of other times, if someone's doing something on their property and it causes siltation and stuff to go into the road, the road agent has the right. To go and tell them they can't do it and stop it because you can't infringe upon the stuff in the road, so he can do that even without your planning board approval.
But I think where it specifically brought up, I'm hesitant not to do it, to just ignore it, as John says. I mean, he had, he had pretty extensive comments. Yeah, it was quite a narrative.
Something in there, um, to make. To ensure anything, any runoff does not interfere with the drainage in the roadway, something like that.
It does require a sixteen foot, um, paved area to go in.
Whatever, whatever it takes to do that, yeah. But even that sixteen foot paved apron is part of subdivision, it's not part of site, so. I, I'm not, I'm, I know it's semantics, but it is.
I know, I know what you're saying.
Not that I'm taking behalf of staff too, but that, like John was saying too, that these comments may be the fire chief and road agent are valid points, however, they're not in here. I thought I'm taking behalf of staff too, but that, like Don was saying too, is that these comments, maybe the fire chief and road agent are valid points, however, they're not in here.
Well, we're doing
But I guess it is impacting.
Well, this is conditional use. But we can put conditions on a conditional use, you know what I mean? We can say, okay, we're using issues as long as you do this. In this case, we're saying no impacts, no erosion.
Right, you go in there anytime you want, but but it's continuing damage to town property.
I, I guess I'm looking at, you know, what, how's the road going to behave in the, in the future if he gives us a big narrative here, we just ignore it.
True.
You know, the staff has, the staff spent time on this, they, he says do something.
But, but staff could tell you, they want you to do something that's totally outside your regulations, you still don't have the authority to do it. Just because staff says they want you to do something, doesn't mean you have the authority.
Well, I think we should put a comment in there, there should be no erosion impacts to the swales or sedimentation. Yeah, I would just put that in.
Well, they actually put it in the roads right away, because technically town doesn't own it, it's a right of way going down through there.
I think we put some language in the no erosion impacts to swell, sedimentation allowed to swell, which like I say, you can force in. As long as we put it in there, at least it's you know, it's in there. Erosion impacts or sedimentation to the swell.
And that's part of all of that application.
Yeah, okay. All right, do we have a motion? We have a motion, decision, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We'll make a motion for grant the approval. Make a motion to grant the approval of the conditional use permit.
Based on the terms and conditions and the notice of decision. There you go.
No, this is not for the conditional use.
That's a
No, no.
Notice that decision.
Say what?
So who did he hit to get? Somebody yet?
No, I was trying to No, we're getting happy.
All right, um, so we have a motion, we have second, buddy?
Andy, I.
Test your eye.
Al or I? Congratulations.
You gotta come in and dispel
I can email you the full and set up a time for you guys to talk about, or you can stop by the office tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
The case that you skipped, the applicant's in now.
Okay.
We actually have a question over here, when is your peach pan?
Side of shot. That's, that's my peach, they have a peach.
I know, it's like peach pan, my kids are telling me that, I love the peaches.
I'm a peach person, so I don't care. All right, going backwards, um, to C1. Applicant for at retail. Do you leave again?
Nope, he's right there, he's right there, come right up.
You're up, man.
Apologize for being late.
Describe your project, what you're looking for?
I've got a new tenant and he's got a online auction that he does. And that's in the warehouse area, there's, there's a metal warehouse. And he's just setting up some tables with cups and things and that kind of stuff. But he's going to be online. May have
Maybe one or two people a day picking and dropping off, that's it, right?
Yeah, there'll be special days where they pick up.
You're not going to fill a parking lot, so.
Yeah, there's, there's not going to be, probably two or three different places, the things in there at a time. I'm not sure what else you want to know about, but.
I think most of the member of the application, the guy gave before. So, couple of legends too, I think, whatever. Any questions or comments on the board? We have a formal, we have a
Better accept, this is a formal application.
Application, so we accept it as complete?
There we go.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So you want to look at the list of uses that he's requesting to make sure that you feel comfortable in all the uses, so even though
All the ones in green you're asking for? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, he did take out two because initial, but I haven't noticed a decision in the staff report with him. Staff account. I haven't looked it up.
A lot of those uses have like the same parking requirements and everything else, so if he has a different tenant, if they fit within the uses, he wants to be able to allow that new tenant to come in without having to come back in front of the board.
Are you requesting every single one in green, is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm asking for.
So if something required more parking under the rig?
If you see any of these ones that that you feel that needs further scrutiny, now's the time to speak up, because if you grant these and a tenant comes in and meets any of those requirements, I'm going to say, okay. If there's any of these that you feel are different, then you want to speak up now and just say I don't agree with this one, or they're all good, or whatever.
I, impressed by your ambition.
You have He doesn't want to come back in every time he has a tenant change.
You might want to look at the staff report or the draft notice decision, it might be
Based on the write-up thing that, that classification qualified. So if there's anything that come in front of the that I suggested should already be approved.
It's allowed in the zone with
Allowed in the zone.
Wireless communication facility.
That's setting for those, please. Um, I'll write that out.
A second, John, I
Did I?
I see a condition of approval place.
That's why if you, that's why I said you need to go over these, because he's asking for all those uses.
Yeah.
So if there's any of those uses you haven't issued out.
So you're talking like putting
You said
Storage facility in there?
No.
Well, storage facility.
Well, basically what it is right now, it's a warehouse that has storage.
Yeah, but you said these are all approved.
Within that building, yeah, we're not adding a building.
You said these all approved, they're not permitted.
And, um, residential a regional commercial.
Regional conversion?
Oh, okay, okay.
That is, the highlighted.
Funeral homes?
Do you have any?
Tell me, don't.
Can I figure out the parking requirements?
That's in your site review regulation.
Do you know what, it seems like some of these would require much more parking.
Yeah, so the higher volume of people you have come in to the square footage of the building, the more parking required. So things that have low volume usage don't have a lot of parking requirements, so um, the retail sales, because of the small amount he has, doesn't retail sales technically usually has a higher amount, but on this particular one for retail sales, it wouldn't be.
So, but things like banks and breweries wouldn't require more parking than what they have? Drugstores?
Yeah, so a lot of
Thanks breweries and drugstores aren't on there.
Oh, he's, he's got
They're in green, aren't you requesting?
Everything in green you're requesting, right?
Is that correct?
You went marked everything that says P on the permitted use, and there's a lot of things that the site review requirements are a little higher, that's why I thought you might want to adjust some of these.
Okay.
And those ones you're telling them to take off, if you, if you, maybe you guys should go down through them one at a time, and Jerry could say, yeah, I don't need that one, or yes, I do need that one. You can make an adjustment to what his uses are. Does that sound like a plan for you guys?
Yeah.
All right, I mean, if you need me to, as staff, I can read a different one.
Yep.
Are they ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, accessory dwelling unit. Any issues? Or should I just read through them all?
Well, accessory dwelling is, is limited to what, a thousand square feet in an existing building or something like that.
Wow, an existing residential building.
Yeah.
So
So this, this is
Wouldn't be an accessory dwelling unit. Is, um, allow for mixed use development, but that would increase parking because you would have the business plus the residentially above, because that'd be a mixed use. You've got it listed in your uses under mixed use.
Yeah, so
Should be, so.
But, but accessory
Accessory dwellings has to be tied to another residential dwelling, this doesn't, there's no residential dwelling.
So that's out.
But doesn't apply, correct.
So.
Agricultural uses.
Agricultural
Agricultural for there, isn't it?
Agricultural uses in the past, and if you exceed the number of animals that are allowed on the lot that's set up by zoning, which is one for every ten thousand square feet for larger animals, then they have to come in for agricultural use, and usually you want to know what you have for animals, how you're going to handle your best manager practice, what you're doing with manures. So usually that's all the stuff that has a discussion for your agricultural uses.
And this is a commercial use, so it really is, just really doesn't Doesn't fit, it's not going to fit, okay.
But I mean, you, that's why I'm making, so you're working with Jerry on this, this is, I'm just explaining the regulations, I'm not telling you what to do.
You get a sense that we're not
We're not fine.
We're not on board for everything.
I think we're putting a lot more effort into what it really needs to be, because what we're looking for is retail use.
But he's, but he's asking, he's asking for every single one of these.
Doesn't have to come back through.
Everyone in green is asking for.
Okay, but anything under that classification, okay, as it, as it's described is you don't need to go in front of the board for any of those, because they're already pre-qualified.
No.
No.
It's a permitted use in the zone.
You're still going to come Still going to come and get approved.
I, I know we've had this discussion and you disagree with me, but it says in there, any, um, commercial, any multi-family or commercial or, um, industrial use needs site review approval, and that's listed in the very beginning of that, so even though it's a permitted use, you still need site approval.
Permit, which is
Right, it's just as permitted in the zone, that's all it is. It doesn't mean you can do it without going to get site review, it means it's permitted in the zone, that's two different things.
So, so you'd have to come to us for an automobile?
He has to come to you for every single one of them things on that list.
That's not a big problem.
So farmer's market.
He can't be within the footprint.
Wow, wow, so, so you're looking at, well, even if it's in the footprint, you're looking at the use, any of them uses
Change of use.
Right, so it'd be a change of use, so he's asking to add these uses, so any uses you feel needs more scrutiny, your site review regulations, you shouldn't be approving tonight. If you feel that what it is, yeah, that's okay, that ain't going to make any difference, that one's not going to make any difference, and you would approve them because you don't need additional information to approve.
Right, but you still have to come before the board.
Well, if you approve him tonight, he wouldn't have to come back, the one
Yeah.
Tonight, he doesn't have to come back.
Well, the one he's proven tonight is just the retail.
No, he's asking He's asking for every single one. All these in green, he's asking for all these.
That's what I thought, but John
What if, oh, he'd have to, so If he puts a hotel, tonight, anything you approve tonight, he wouldn't have to come back.
Do, we approve it today, he's all set.
So we put the hotel.
Yeah. So if he asks for it tonight and we say, okay, he can do it.
Yeah, so that's one of the ones, a hotel
Why John's saying
Because you're not going to want to look at the whole parking on that, the number of units in it, everything, you gotta
Can I see the list you have?
What?
Can I look at the list you have?
Yeah. I think it's your list.
Anything that's said permitted use, Jerry thought he could do without
I just blew out all
Well, what Jerry's looking at, the next one is a agricultural use, so to me, it's, it's a commercial use. So I would, I would dump that one too.
Okay, why don't we just do this, all I'm looking for is, is, uh, retail.
Oh, okay, that'll be easy.
Before, which is what I asked for.
All right.
We could do like open air farmer's market.
Right.
Could you do that?
That's like agricultural, he's
Restaurant.
Well, no, you know, a restaurant or a gas station.
Yeah, but you could
Any of those kind of things, they'll all more
Under commercials use, you could find something that was said, but
Yeah, I was thinking like parking lot.
So there's probably one
So he's just looking for retail, he just did.
Okay, which, which, which one is that?
So just retail.
I guess like Arts and crafts establishment? That could be retail, art studio.
Which one of you put approved?
Retail uses.
We said, second page? Second page, okay, retail. Where is that? Retail uses, retail uses, that we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. So so just to be sure, there's one, there's a cat, under commercial use, there's a conditional use, additional approval. Oh, it's Um, so you're looking for retail uses, that's the only one you're asking?
The only one you're asking.
All I'm asking for.
Thank you.
Put something better together, somebody else goes in there.
Yeah, you can come back, you can come back. So now what? Um, we got the application
Like being here?
What do we do now?
Um Will you, uh
He's only asking for this one.
Okay. Um Have to see if the application complete.
Already done that. So I would say that you're going to make a motion to approve, well, open it public.
I have a waiver as well.
Acceptance, acceptance. We accept this completely?
Yeah, you did, didn't you? Didn't you accept the
I think we did.
No.
It was
I think we did.
Maybe you haven't.
All right. I make a motion, we accept this application two five oh dash eighty-one dash R C dash twenty-two dash S R.
I second it.
Buddy?
And we're, it's only going to be, it's not
You're just accepting the application, not approving it.
Not approving it.
Oh, okay.
Happy L O I.
Let's go on.
Test your eye.
L O I.
You can either discuss waivers and
Okay, um
Applicants ask, um, for a waiver to use the site plan on file, the waiver, the site plan requirement says there's no external site changes. The language, um, by not granting the unnecessary hardship, advocate and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of regulations.
I make a motion that we waive the recite plan requirements as there's no external to slight changes.
I second it.
To not grant the waiver would be a probably unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
I second it.
Buddy?
Let's go on.
Test your eye.
Al or I? Okay. Public comment?
But we're so glad you didn't pursue that one.
If you do open them, just go read, let us know.
Well, I almost had a guy going in that wanted to do that.
Open a public comment, anybody in the audience have any public, any comments? Online, close public comment? All right, and I guess we've got a request applicant to modify the application who only, only requesting retail uses on table one, under regional commercial category. Is it permitted use? Yes. Question?
That one. There.
Oh, yeah, did we? Hours of operation? You have hours of operation?
Um They're going to be like one day a week where people can come in.
You want to ask for
Like Monday through Friday?
If I like Friday, yeah, this Eight to five, something like that? Seven to five? Six, seven?
Nine to five.
They did, and for the
Take the extra hours, you're gonna
Eight to five.
You can go seven to eight if you want it.
Seven to eight, then.
Better have more hours and not using them.
And you could even ask seven days a week.
Yeah.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week. Realistically, they're not going to really be there that much. They can do a lot of that remotely once they get everything set up.
Come back, it'll be a violation. All right, so.
Help me to read that.
Yeah, okay. I'm just going to read the note, the note, draft notice of decision.
Um, to approve the application, approved days of the week are Sunday through Saturday, seven days a week, hours of operation are seven AM to eight PM for the retail use and regional commercial. Any changes to site for operation of the business require reapplication by the planning board. And the board granted a waiver to use the plan on file and waive the site plan requirements. There are no external site changes. Pretty much with the best of luck of the project.
Uh, motion to approve that notice of decision.
Take that move.
Happy L O I.
That's your I.
L O I. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So next item on the agenda is seven A. Request for a building permit on sixty-eight Rocky Point Road.
I have a screen.
Financial interest in sight. Financial interest.
Yes.
All right, uh, can you say who you are and, uh, describe your project?
Good evening, I'm Rick Rogers, Stonewall Surfing, representing George Freepoots. Next to me. Five third, block sixty-eight. Uh, back up, uh, twenty-one, uh, here tonight, the private group. See? Just want to provide a little history first on this property project, so. Client purchased the lakefront property in April two thousand. Existing house is a level year-round, can't deck it. Stairs. There's only adequate parking for one car. Property was created in nineteen sixty-one and the house was built in fifteen fifty, town tax card. They have been.
That's the.
Are you going to be mostly talking or? There you go, lovely. Thank you.
I've been spending the last several winters in Florida, but are difficult to transition back. They want to make the new home accommodate to stay in Hampshire throughout the year. Proposed plan is to replace the one-story house, two-story, twenty-four foot deep and thirty-four foot tall house that would be centered on the lot in parallel. While inseptically updated, the driveway would be adjusted to allow for two cars in a fashion that a multiple front like four turnaround. Dry wells will be installed under the deck to capture rainwater from the roof. Lot coverage will be reduced from fifty-two percent to forty-three point eight percent. So the plan is, does not add a new residence, just updates and improves an old residence, plus improves the waterfront lot. The anticipated building is going to be two hundred and eighty back. Last year, it's eighth placement of the residence on Rocky Point Road. Fair plans and submitted to the town zoning board for setback relief and the project was approved on September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Shoreland permit was approved by the state of the Hampshire on December first, two thousand twenty-one. And the proposed septic design was approved by the state of the Hampshire on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Rocky Point Road is nine hundred foot long, more or less paved road surface. Paved surface varies between sixteen feet, small gravel. Right away varies, but is around sixteen feet away. The road is maintained yearly by the Rocky Point National Association, was established in two thousand seventeen. It's filed, state in the. State filing, the association states to provide a financial base in order to maintain and approve Rocky Point Road and further to buy an organization for determining what necessary overseeing its completion and assuring funding required to complete the work. Each year, sections of the road are updated or repaired as needed as the association sees fit. The association is also recorded at the Stafford County Regis- Registry of Deeds. Overall, the road is in good condition, but does not meet criteria for the class six private real building policy. Where the right of way is narrow and winding is not feasible to widen the road. Even adding gravel shoulders will encroach onto abiding property owners, properties in my client has no right forcibly taking this land to accommodate the town requirements. The best approach is proper maintenance of the paved service, which is monitored yearly. Also tight, there is a larger paved turnaround at the end of the road. My clients have been paying maintenance costs on the road in the roads is in decent shape for the private way. Um, I'll also state that prior to Rocky Point Association, they were part of Mike Point Association and they went off onto their own, so they had full control of their road. Reading the staff report, the chief of police has no issue with the current condition of the road. The fire chief will support the select for decision. Agent recommends this road be left alone. Right there, it says, or in the staff report, left alone. Also see the, his letter dated January. Station signed the letter stating. To the road. That cost, which is also in the package. Um. Interesting, tough, it was an accident area in the road last week and the car went. And the homeowner's property went off into the lake. And they had ambulance, fire, police, tow truck, all down there. And everybody was able to get around fine. In this situation, the twenty-eight thousand requirement is extremely steep and difficult when older couple with a fixed, fixed budget. The road is in good condition. It already has an association in place that maintains the road yearly. There is not to be, there does not appear to be any issues from the department heads and my client have agreed that any part of the road is damaged during construction, that they will repair that damaged section. We know that Bob will do a good job keeping it safe. Um, we understand the purpose of the road policy and yes, there are many roads in town that are very back condition, especially during winter and wet season. This is not one of those roads. We ask that the planning board accept the waiver request for this recommendation to the select.
Um, any questions? I have a couple of questions. Um, the square footage of the. You said the lot covers are going down, but the square footage seems to be going up substantially based on the drawings.
You said the lot covered, yes, because there's, right now, there's a lot of. Um. In the, if you looked at the actual zoning plan that was approved by the zoning board, um, it shows in there what's been done. And basically, right now, the existing house, it's on the property, there's a lot of gravel. There's, I mean, stone, there's a big deck, a lot of decking, all the way the front, on the side, in the front, on the other side. So all the improvements that are being done actually are reducing this coverage.
But how big was, how many square feet was the building now? In, what's the, what's the square footage, what's you calling?
The square footage of single, single story. No, no, we actually had that.
Talking about.
So I wasn't really expecting to be discussing the, uh, approved plans.
Do you know off the top of your head, Bob, what your square footage of that?
Square footage, that's it, that's a new.
But it's two stories.
Oh, yeah. That's what the old one, how you do, the old.
The old square footage?
Yeah.
Oh.
The old square footage, what's that?
Sixteen forty.
And the new footprint is what?
It's more, very similar. If there was no increase to you, there would be no requirement to upgrade the road.
Yeah, but is this a non-conforming structure?
It's easily existing non-conforming. Please to have, uh, stuff done and all your addressing is access on the road. It has nothing to do with seventy-eight percent. It is access to the road.
If you like, I have a copy of the existing in the proposed.
I think that might be in their package.
Yeah, but that was, that was a front setback. My question is, under five point two, you can't increase the, uh, size of the building. And there's no variance for that. So my question is, is this in compliance with the regulations?
Yeah, and there's variance. The size of the building on a non-conforming thing, it says you can't expand it unless the expansion applies or you get relief from the building. So you can do it because they got relief from the.
No, they didn't. They could, they got, they got relief for the front setback only. They did not get relief for the size.
They can expand, they can expand the building if it meets the criteria of setback by the regulation. Or you can go to the zoning board, you can get relief from that. It's not that you can't extend a building that's non-conforming. That's not what the regulation says.
It says such non-conforming building or structure may not be enlarged, expanded, or otherwise altered in a manner that results in said building or structure being less conforming.
Keep reading.
So.
Keep reading.
To the provisions of this ordinance, except as provided by below.
Except as provided below. They met the exception as what was provided below. That's the point.
I think they did not.
What section are you in?
I'm in five point two.
Okay, so it says permitted expansions of certain non-conforming structures. Any lawfully existing non-conforming structure may be enlarged or expanded. If such an expansion can be executed in compliance with all setback, height limitation, or other dimensional requirements of this ordinance, and does not make the building or structure less conforming than its present configuration, except as provided in five point two point one, parentheses two. And it says, notwithstanding anything in this provision of contrary, a lawfully non-conforming structure may be expanded into the setback area by the addition of another. So when they went to that. Went to the Z B A and they got relief to expand into, because it says unless it goes into the. Right, right, so that it didn't meet those setbacks. So they got relief from the zoning board to beat the setbacks.
I think that they should have gotten relief from five point two as well. Because they, they increased the area, they're going into the set, they're going, they're exceeding, you're not meeting the setback, front setback, that's one requirement they're not meeting.
And they got relief for that.
And they did, and they're expanding the building. They need relief for that too. Yeah. Well, or it's because it's non-conforming up, that's a non-conforming structure. Those rules apply.
But they, they can't get into the setback, but then the Z B A gave relief, so they could go into the setback.
They, that's right, but they should have given also relief for the increase in the building size, which they did not. So I'm, I'm thinking the Z B A area, they should have good, they should have been two. Two variants, not one. There's two things they're not complying with. They're not complying with front setback and not, they're not complying with five point two.
I disagree with your thoughts. And it's irrelevant.
The zoning actually didn't.
To me, it's not irrelevant, John. Whether we make a recommendation depends on whether.
No, your recommendation has to do with access. It has nothing to do with the variance.
And whether I just got to say to think access is appropriate, it depends on the use of the property. If they're going to do one thing versus another, I'm going to say, yeah, for that access, I think it's good. For this, it's something else. I, I think the use does matter. I noticed it not directly with it on person, but. Wow.
And these are approved all the time around the lake. All these small lots are approved in this manner. I have done many of them.
The town's attorney has been coming to the meetings and.
Yeah, we, I've never had to do a, uh, zoning board for five point two. As long as the zoning board approved the setbacks and approved the design, they're approving the building. When it's here, they are.
They gave you a variance for the front setback. I agree with that.
And the sides.
Size, but they didn't give you a variance for the size of the building.
Technically, I, to me, they did because it was there and it was no issue. There were, that was not an issue that was a hint. If there was, they, and I've had some where they've actually brought up the height of the buildings and they've questioned the height of the. And basically it fell, it fell in line with the code. Even John has defended his argument about that where the code is written. His owner board didn't even have that option, option.
I listen to John all the time, but I don't have to always agree.
But, I mean, we're here because of the road right of way. I mean, this is approved. And the way I feel is if that's an issue, that's fine. That's something that I think that the planning board should have a discussion with the zoning board and say, are, are we, are you guys doing these all right? That's fine. Have a discussion with them, talk about it. But this was approved by the planning board last year. What we're, nothing's changed right now. You haven't changed anything.
I hear what you're saying, but I'm saying that you needed two approvals, you don't want. That's what I'm saying.
So, so you're on the, are you on the zoning board?
No.
Okay, so you're on the planning board?
Yes.
Not, so you're going to basically say that the zoning board did not do their job?
I would be willing to say that in this case, yeah.
Okay, so it's on record that you'd be on the zoning board.
I think.
For what they're doing.
No, I think they, I think they aired it in this case.
Uh, no, it's not.
No, because he, he said he didn't think that they did it. He didn't say that they do, don't know what they're doing. So the two different things.
Well.
Max making accusations against their character, something he did not say. Don't do that, okay?
Don't take what I say about one thing and then expand it the whole way. They don't know what they're doing cap launch. I said, I think they aired it on this one issue. There's different opinions.
But they've been doing it for a long time.
And the town's attorney is going to be there.
Yeah, no, no, a non-conforming structure, a lot of records, fine, but when you expand the building, then you, when you expand a non-conforming structure, then rules apply. And I'm saying that those rules were, the, the proper variance for those rules, to me, were not, were not get, were not achieved. So, I mean, that's my opinion.
Actually, Vanessa will send it to us tomorrow during the day to get an answer.
Okay.
By the extension of the building, you. The act, this is about access that you're making a recommendation to the farm select board about the access that they're doing without doing any upgrades because of the recommendation of the department heads. So I guess it comes down to do you feel that the recommendation of the department heads is legit, or do you feel that something else should be done? Your recommendation to the select board. Because you're here just for that access for this, yeah.
Yeah, but I, once again, John, to me, whether I think access is appropriate, depends on whether I think the project's appropriate. And, you know, so to me, there, there's not, there's a nexus state, legal nexus state. It does connect the two. If, you know, am I going to provide access, am I going to get it totally appropriate? Yes, I'm going to recommend that. Am I going to recommend, recommend, recommend access if I think it's not appropriate? The answer is no. So I, I, you can't separate the two. You know, you can't tell me to provide access to that property and, and say you can't look at what they're actually doing. You know, I, I just don't agree with that, John. What they're doing matters. What the project is matters before you agree on access to it. So. So I know that, you know, you disagree, but to me, what they're.
Maybe we get the town's attorney to hit that thing on that because we've had that discussion with them many times. She actually told the Z B A on the next case that they had no right to look at the access, that they had just to look at the setback because they wanted to get some information on the access. And she said that has nothing to do with the waiver. It has to do with access and that's up to the selectman because it's a private road. So I mean, I will get this for the attorney so the attorney can tell you, not me. I mean, I've had many conversations with attorneys and I'm repeating what I've been told. And if you want to accept it, fine. If you want it straight from the attorney, that's fine too. I don't have an issue with that.
I, I think it's this ongoing issue, I think, should get clarified by the attorney. Because it's, it's something we deal with all the time.
No, I'm actually fine with that. I'm fine with the fact that we say that we've got to get clarification on it. We, when we're representing our clients, are using the resources that we have, which is town, the regulations. We go forward in that manner.
No, I understand.
You went to the zoning board and not just for this case. I mean, I've done, you know, several of them that I've gone to.
My fault. You did what you thought was a.
And, uh, ex-chairman of the Z B A was a land use attorney that's addressed it that way for as long as I can remember.
It's fine. I mean, look, we're going to have the attorney look at it and we'll get an answer, but, um, the issue is in front of us, a recommendation for what, the ten percent is focusing on?
Yeah, while the road issue, do you feel the road needs to be upgraded? I have a question. If there is upgraded, what would that be?
Fine, I have a question.
While back, the fire chief sat back there. Bitching, all right. Came up to the table. Finding mainly about access and wits to get the vehicles down. All of a sudden, he's okay.
Yeah, it's interesting, he, he was upset that we constantly were selectmen constantly approving building permits on non-conforming roads.
Right.
And I think that's, you know, I think, I listened to that and I, I took it to heart. I think that, um, you know, we have continuing problems on, on bodies of water as get more and more developed, more intensive and all year-round use versus part-time use. So, I mean, I think there's valid points to, some towns don't give building permits on non-conforming roads at all. They just don't. Here in Barrington, you can, if you get approved from the selectman, you can, or you can pay the ten percent. So, selectman is not a guarantee. So, selectmen, it's not a guaranteed with the selectman, but, you know, they've, you know, in the past, they've been pretty lax about it. We put in the 10% as a guaranteed way to go. So now there's a pathway that's, you know, is guaranteed, she didn't have it before. So I know the 10% is never easy, but it's, it's a way now to positively go forward, which before you didn't have, without a special permission from the select.
Right.
So.
And there are some roads who really need it and there are other roads that don't.
You know, when you get into being subjective about you might apply it here and not apply it there, then I think that's a slippery slope. So.
Unfortunately, the road agent is not helping.
Chief isn't either. If you feel that something needs to be done to the road, you guys have a right to make that recommendation to the selectman.
Well, I would follow the lead of the road agent, he's the expert, I don't know. And he's just saying, even if you added some gravel, it may impact the driveways.
Well, I would argue, I, I would argue every private road can benefit from investment.
But I go back to what you said, Ron. We sat there and we picked around the idea of the five percent, seven. And we agreed, selectmen backed us up, put it in there. Now we're just letting it, tonight we'll say okay, tomorrow we'll all.
Yeah, I mean.
You could say straight up, you think that he should invest a 10% and that will go to the selectman, and then the selectman will consider that along with those other recommendations.
They say no, go to the ZBA and they'll say yes.
I mean, there is, there is the process that they can do that.
Yeah, you know, I think that to me.
We're just advisory here.
Correct. Just recommendation.
You're gonna boot it to them.
So I guess.
I, I hear you. We have a regulation, it's a lot easier if we just follow.
Does the fellow board members feel, but I, I've watched some of these things, like you give a lot of waivers.
On this particular road.
If you go out there, everything is paid.
Your department head is, there was nothing they felt could be done to the road to make it safer. So to spend money for the sake of spending money, if it's not making it safer, what are you spending the money for? That was basically what your department head said. So if you feel that everybody has to spend money just for the sake of spending money, then say, yes, you gotta spend the 10%.
Oh, it's a future expense.
I, I think it's difficult to, you know, make a decision when to apply, when to apply and when not to apply. You know.
That's the reason why your department heads wouldn't look at it, if there was a way to spend the money to make it safer, I'm sure they would have said so. They're doing all the other.
Yeah.
I know you've been out there, but has ever, anybody else have taken a ride out to the site? I mean, um, to make some, not that we would make the planning, we're not here to make recommendations, but I know I drove out to the site, everything is, all the driveways are all paved, the entire road is paved. I'm not quite sure what additional. I know, like you said, you rely on the road agent, we all rely on his things, and he said he didn't have anything because it's such a well-maintained road. I don't know, because if they're gonna be a part of the road association, that could be something that.
They live there and I've been on that road, it's Titans.
Yeah.
I saw the 10-foot one you talked about.
Yeah.
Can't imagine trying to get an engine there.
No.
But then you didn't have to under the law.
No, they, last week, they did, they got the, they got the ambulance, they got a police, they got a tow truck.
My question is, 10% for some. We'd all let snow go. Private property, if they must. You know, I've, I've been on that road, I know somebody lives down there and probably one of the better ones. Well, it's narrow, it is well-kept, so. But I always wondered about that.
They actually repaved the section last year, it actually had all my control points on it.
So the way I'm reading this, that 10% has to be spent right now on the road as opposed to setting aside for future.
Yeah, because what happens is if you gave it to the association, because that was a discussion before, that would be considered extortion because you're saying pay a third party and we'll give you permission?
Extortion is a strong word, John.
I'm just saying, that's, that's basically what it comes down to, that's why they can upgrade, if there's something to do to the road, they're supposed to do it. You can't make them pay someone money.
Yeah.
And the town has no authority to do any work in the road. And the association is already set up to maintain and keep the thing going, which they're part of. So any upgrades of this stuff they're already doing and they're gonna continue to do, and the reason why the road's in the good a shape that it is is because of what they've been doing. So as Ray pointed out, we have other roads in town where the associations don't maintain such a good job and those need a lot of work, and there's always a place to lose the 10%. But to tell someone that's done a good job and has spent the money and maintained everything all along, oh, well, we want you to spend 10%, but we don't know what you want you to do with it because you guys did a great job already, kinda makes no sense.
Well, I mean, I think you can always take down trees and expand and stuff like that.
But you'd be on private property to do that, so it has to be something, you know, do, do they have a right to go on private property and take down someone else's trees?
Well, I, you know, I don't. At this point, didn't do a sidewalk, don't look at the right of ways, you know, don't know the concept, so. That's, that's the question, maybe we. Pardon? Right after the pay section.
It's a little small right away, yeah.
The choke points you're talking about, John, do you think there was, are they in the right of way?
I remember it, I think there were a couple of big trees.
There's, there's such, I mean, whether or not they're in the right of way or.
10 foot.
Right, the other thing is, you know, pretty much all the, because these are, it's a little plain.
Yeah, I know.
So there's water on all sides, so all the septics are up against the road.
Right.
So again, you gotta be careful.
Yeah, I don't think there's much you can do there, because I'm intruding in private property.
And the other thing, like with this, is I understand that the road policy.
Association, which is trying to get funds from this person.
You know, one of the things that I think with the road policy right now, that I understand the point of it, but, you know, like, this was, when they started this process, they were going along with the way things had been being done in town. And whether or not it was right or wrong is indifferent, this is the way the process was.
Yeah, but you're saying, you're saying they had a clear path and they didn't. They needed, they needed board of selectman approval. So to say they could build before this regulation went in place is not true. They have, they have a pathway now, which they didn't have.
That was a, with the waiver form that they would, you would sign, which they did sign. Um, but my point is that this was all in action before this new policy came.
And my point was before that you didn't have a pathway forward, without, without board of selectman waiver. So you didn't, you didn't have a way.
They waived them on a regular basis because there was a section in there that said, well, one in two family homes, that they could waive it, it was written right in their regulations, and that's what they were doing.
Yeah.
This new policy doesn't have that in there, so as far as a path, there was always a path. They waived them most of the time because, or put in a couple loads of gravel or do stuff like that. So this is way more stringent, even though there's a path, this is way more stringent than the old.
But John, with the change in selectmen and stuff like that, there's no, there's no guarantees. The selectman can change and that traditional waiting, which I agree almost happened, might have gone away, so there's no, before there was no guarantee. You couldn't guarantee you're gonna get it, you couldn't. With, it, it, new segment came in, they have a different point of view.
Okay, so if you wanna guarantee the 10%, what is the, where do you want them to spend the money? What do you want them to fix? If there's nothing for them to fix, what do you, what are they spending the money for? That's the point.
Well, there's two sides of it, I think one is, you're right, do, do you have a, where's a place to put the money that makes sense? And the other thing is, do we?
Not put the, not to put the money, to work to do, to upgrade the road.
Do we have work that can be done to?
That's the point, that's what the department heads all said, there's nothing that can be done to the road to make it more safe. That was the point they were trying to make, they've already done all that work.
Strong point, okay. So I guess the recommendation is, gonna draft a letter to the selectman, I guess to, you know, there's two paths, I want to kinda lobby the board here and see where, see where they are. One is, we wanna be consistent, we're gonna enforce the 10%. In this case, because the road is paved and in pretty good condition, we only see where the money could go, we could, we could say, we don't think they should go with the 10%. So.
Well, you could say extending my recommendations.
And, and recommendations by the road agent, right?
Or you could do it simple and make no stand and just say you support the department head's recommendation.
Well, I think we gotta say whether we want it. Which would be supporting, could support thing. Where, where's everyone coming down? Well, I think we need a motion, we gotta see where, where, where everyone's head is. Nothing, 10%.
So I don't agree with the fact that they submitted this petition earlier and then we changed the regulation, well, we changed the regulation and they're here, so it applies to them. But it is a problem of where to spend the 10% on money.
Yeah.
If we had some input, usable input from the staff, that would be helpful.
Okay, so.
We're not getting that, not even the comment by the fire chief.
Well, I think they looked at it and they said, basically, they come down, there's nothing that you can spend money on to make this road better, so what are they gonna tell you? I mean.
Nothing we can do to make this road better.
We know where you're at. Boy, where are you, where you coming down?
The road agent said it all in his last comment, he said, leave it alone.
Okay.
I, I think there's, there's some bigger challenges to what's going on here, has enough.
They have other roads that are terrible, so.
Right, right. We need to focus on what their needs are and what we can do with that. I don't know if the, the fire chief makes comments, but it happens quite often, he says, I, I'd do that decision with somebody else.
Yeah. Andy, I think we're leaning toward saying extenuating circumstances, you, you good with that?
Yeah.
All right, so, letter to the, uh, letter to the selectman would be, um, we recommend waiving the 10% requirement in this case because the road is paved and in good condition. We don't see a path to go forward, we don't see a good place for the money. We don't see a project that would justify the expenditure. Yeah, based on road agent recommendations. Thank you, good.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Good luck. All right, so we have another private road.
Oh, wait.
Wayne, back.
Yeah.
You're just making a recommendation.
Yeah.
This is, yeah.
Although there was a comment on. Didn't get it.
Uh, no.
Good on a butter, we made on a butter, I think, comment on this one, yeah.
Absolutely, so, they, um.
We just read it in the record. Do you have it?
Oh, the letter?
The letter. It was a butter that had it.
I can read it.
The butter presented a.
Is it here?
He's here.
Okay. The butter's here, the butter's here.
All right. So. Scott Frank was from New Hampshire Land Consultants, Dwayne Watson from Unified Builders doing the building. We're here for the same thing as the last application, building on a private road, Cottage Lane. It's an existing house on 65 Cottage Lane, F11, plot 11, Robert George Grumbles. But what we're proposing, I don't know if you have the plan that was submitted or, because it's really.
We don't.
Don't. I don't have it up to the screen. So it's a, it's an existing non-conforming lot. The road that it's on Cottage Lane is a, a private road that services three houses. One of the abutters is here, Mr. Grumbles, then there's another one at the beginning of the road that is on the market. Uh, what we're proposing is an expansion of the house. Mr. Grumbles has some medical issues where he has to have the house more ADA compliant and we can speak to that if you'd like after. What we're proposing is the actual 10%. We submitted a cost estimate to do these improvements. Uh, first, out at Young Road, which isn't shown on these plans, is they're gonna put in a 16-foot apron that's required for the new driveways in town. Uh, then as you look at the plan, do you got any existing conditions on the left and proposed conditions on the right? Uh, the proposed conditions on the right shows hatched areas, uh, where expanding the driveway, so at the minimum, it's 25. Other places, 28 to 30. But as you get further down the road into the abutters house.
31.
A 31 feet. We got permission from abutters to work on their property and that was in the package uh, to cut down some trees and degrade the road. And as you get to the end of the road where it's kind of a funky turnaround right now to the abutters house, we're gonna square that off so that it's another, that gets down in there, it's a better area to turn around and back out. So like I said, we're proposing to the house, we did get a variance for a setback requirement. All at the front property, that's where the, the right of way on the steel wagons property is. Uh, we got a variance for that last month. Can I turn over to Dwayne if you have any questions on what the house is gonna be and why they're doing it? It is, again, we're not increasing traffic on the road at all, just in house, Mr. Grumbles.
Right, the, the property to.
Okay.
Just a quick comment. Both the fire chief and road agent are not happy. Trying to find great blankets, I don't support any way this road is narrow, tough on the fire truck to navigate, not a good place to turn around. It's a road age. You can read, I'm sure you've seen it.
Yeah.
So, how do you address it? Yeah, well, so we submitted our first proposal, right, and we were addressing that sharp turn that he was concerned about. He's already had ambulances back there and we've had propane tanks on and so forth. So his concern was getting around that first turn that you see on the, uh.
Where the large tree is showing.
Where the large tree is. And so we have an agreement from the property owner.
Yeah.
So the northeast takes part of his land and we expanded that turnaround to make that, what is it?
22 feet.
22 feet, whereas before it was 16. And then, uh, as far as the turnaround, again, we took, um, and have an agreement with the abutter, uh, silhouette to shave that property and square it off, so he can get two trucks down there and he can certainly turn around, he's got it up to one feet. It'll all be graded, stone added, so on and so forth. Um, and, and when you come in, uh, if you look at the northeast side, you come in Cottage Lane, there's a whole just flat area that you can put four trucks in if you wanted to. As far as the, uh, the narrow road, when you first enter off of Young Road, that's a little bit tight, I think it's 16, 16 feet. It's tight. Yeah, it's, it's tough, but if you look, we have, again, we're taking, already taking steel wagons land, we got wetlands on the left and you've got that hill with the ledge. What do you do with that? Precisely, and in fact, we're building up there and we, um, uh, we're gonna take that piece of the road.
Yeah.
We're gonna grade it, we're gonna add stone and go out as far as we possibly can with it. But neither, neither one of those, those landowners said, you've already taken enough of our property, we're not gonna give you any more. So it is a bit short, but you can.
You're doing like a 25 feet or so.
Yep.
I'm talking about for the 400 feet up to the.
Yep. Yeah, that's a toughie.
It's a toughie.
Yeah, but you can get in there from public safety access standpoint, you can get in there and once you're in there, you've got.
And I see a key area, because that's where I turned to rent.
No more traffic beyond what's already there, uh, you can't build beyond the last house. Butter who's present, in fact, is the last house, three homes.
The house with the, you said the house is for sale, but the one with the, at the end of.
Yeah, when you first come into the left, but.
Yeah. Not that I'm looking for.
Oh. A chunk of change they want for it.
Couple of.
Yeah. Yeah.
The fuel plants.
I don't know how many renters they have and they have upwards of four cars, I know that the, a lot of people looking at it, they want a single family right there on the beach, so it would even reduce traffic.
I'll ask the same question as before, the square footage now and who's square footage? The existing footprint of the house, uh, it's like 11.
Again, you know, we went in front of the ZBA with, with this for the variance and I wasn't prepared to.
I'm sure you heard the previous discussion.
Beg your pardon?
Sure you heard the previous discussion.
Absolutely.
This one was conformed before the expansion.
Yes.
And that all was setback.
Yes.
It's non-conforming off the existing house, that's all.
How it was conformed and that all was setback.
Then when you, once you expand, you, you're a non-conforming spectrum and you run into those 5.2. Once you expand it, that becomes a, they got relief to have that.
But it's all correct.
Once you expand it, you run on to form.
The building should be on the building room. But it's a conforming structure right now.
So they all take together, granted.
And they got this setback.
Once again, because if they expand the footprint, then the 5.2, they didn't. A. A.
Said, that's what.
Yeah. Yeah, but a. New struc, new structure. New, new structure on a non-conforming structure. It doesn't, it doesn't get all the crap.
Yeah.
But they turn your way on that.
So it's, it's, uh. I'm sorry, existing is 1,200 square feet and we're adding a little over 1,000. Yeah, I'm.
36, 28.
It's kind of, it's an L. It comes to the side, which is.
That 22, is that footprint or is that total square footage? I'm talking footprint, Dwight.
Yeah, so it's.
I think that.
It's the footprint, okay.
Yeah, and again, it's an L and the L that goes on the side of the house is well within the setbacks. It's just that garage essentially is what's going up front.
Now, your client has offered to pay the 10%, right?
Well, not 10%.
You paid in the road that equals 10%, not pay 10%.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, it's 18 grand.
No. Yes.
In the application, it's 18 grand.
18 grand.
And the work is 380.
Yeah, okay, so it's not.
Not, not gonna be 380, no.
Pardon?
It will not be 380. It's, well, it's way over his budget with all the prelims and, but the road improvements that he's had to put into it, it's way over budget, so we've had to scale it way back. So.
Might wanna show what the building cost is gonna be and the road upgrade is gonna be to save that 10%.
Sure, I mean, yeah, the, the road improvements were, uh, again, over 18,000, 18, 27.
Well, unlike the previous one, I mean, this road can take the, take the money. So, but. Listen.
That was the, that comment in the last case, this is your clear path to get it and to pay 10%. That's what they're offering, even though.
Yeah, that's.
Said, he's not.
Even though the department has this time says, no, I don't.
Looking to buy it. It's John about, said he's willing to do that. Yeah, doing the front there and the, and he said, yeah, it's in his land.
See, I would say, yes, but they look at us.
It sounds like the department had actually.
And the department said, I'd rather.
That's. Exactly, and, and in fact, I, I don't think that the fire chief went back out and took a look at it or, or actually took a look at our revised plan because he said the same thing the second time around. And I went and talked to Mark, the road agent, and he said, absolutely. And I said, well, where do I go with this? He said, well. Everything. How do I do that? I've tried to get in front of the fire chief and he's, he's busy with the tricentennial or whatever else, but he won't see me to, I wanted to show him, I want to make sure that he understands that. Hey, we've, we're exceeding what the requirements are. You can get your trucks in, you can turn them around, but he's like, no, you'll be in front of the board. That's it. Can't get an audience with him.
If I may, as town staff, um, the, um, the land use department is in charge of getting, gathering the comment. I did receive their updated plan. I did send them back out to everybody for review and. Like the applicant is saying, which may, may not be unfortunate, that, um, he said he was staying with what he was saying, even though they're. I, from town planner's point of view, I feel like they're needing kind of what the road agent and the fire chief had. That they were not initially, and then when they submitted the replan, he said, my comments stay the same. So I, there's only so much that we can do and it'll be there with the applicant.
Wonder.
I don't know.
The whole, 525 feet. But 400 feet of it are beyond the, the turn for the big tree.
He's not willing to do.
125 feet, do a major, major. Widening up to what, 31 feet.
Yeah.
And his issue before was he didn't want to have to back his equipment out. They're giving him more than enough to return his equipment around.
Well, because the first house there has a huge driveway anyway, which I turned around tonight.
But that's gonna get even better when they fix that corner and take trees out.
Yep.
But somebody was saying, the house is for sale, right?
I've talked to a couple of people about.
Are they willing to work with?
It's, it's.
Wow, what they actually told me was they have no problem joining the association and they're willing to put upgrades into the road too, be to get a, a building permit if they have to. The two different people that talked to me about it, that looked at it.
I mean, as a point of order, to me, if they're 18 and they, if they do the 10%, I don't know how we can say no. Even if the road needs more than 10%. The, the, you know, the guaranteed path we just talked about, if you put the 10%, you can go. So whether the road needs 100% or whatever, our regulations say 10%.
All due to the situation we ran into, offering a very.
And then I think it's the next person who upgrades on that road that pays an additional 10%.
That was the whole thing about that, continuing from getting better as you go along.
Yeah, absolutely, and the seller of this property right now doesn't want to put anything into it, obviously, and then as John had said, the, uh, prospective buyers have said, yeah, sure, we'll, we'll take care of the rest of that. And that's their property. They can do that, you know?
I can't touch it. Well, I mean, to me, do 10%. And the regulations say you can go. That's the real. I don't know. He said it to the previous guy.
But we're here to give a recommendation to the selectmen. We can't do anything.
I, I think.
So, so we could say. We're happy with 10%, but he's gonna revise numbers because the building permit here says it's 380.
Yeah, yeah.
So the selectmen can see.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Forgive me for that, but that, that was our very rough estimate.
And you can change that.
Yeah.
You can change that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, before you go to the selectmen, have your accurate number and show that it's 10%.
Yeah.
We recommend, yeah, the 10% is fine.
Yeah, I think in this, we were okay with a waiver by this.
I wouldn't say stick with the 10%.
Yeah.
I would say with the improvements.
With the improvements because, you know, materials are changing every day. I mean, everybody knows that, right, and I don't, I don't want to be held by that 10% and it, you know, cost them another six, eight grand.
10%, not scope necessarily, so if, if costs go up, you can reduce your scope.
Well, once, oh, no, once they agree to the work to be done, I have to make sure that work's done before I give them the CO. So if their cost goes up and said, we're bringing the scope down, they gotta go back to the select board because I'm getting the thing. I gotta make sure this is done before the CO happens.
But again, we're putting in over 18,000 cents in this road.
You're almost there. I mean, you're almost there. I mean, if you, let's say you're pushing 250, talking about another seven.
It is gonna be absolutely very, very difficult, you know, to, to put any more into this, this project and give him his, the access that he needs for.
We have a, we have a policy.
Situation.
This road can, but that align. Our chief is, oh, the agent's, oh, so I think to waive anything less than 10% in this case, to me, that's the policy, is difficult to. Some to grips with, I think, to me.
But can't we, again, can't we focus on the, the improvements that we're actually taking on this property? Uh, 10% aside. Why aren't we taking, looking at what we're actually doing on this road? We are, absolute.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think if you're doing 18 grand, you're already, I think, a long way to the getting where we need today.
Yes.
Meet the regulations.
And we are improving public safety access to this road like never before. And there's not gonna be any more traffic on this road because nobody else can build on this road, you know? I, I just, I, I, I don't believe that it's, it's, it's fair to hold us to this 10% when we're going as far as we possibly can with what we have and we're giving beyond what anybody's requiring. And again, I question whether the fire chief, with all due respect, actually took at those, took a look at those revised plans. He said, my comments are still the same. Well, how can they even be the same? We've given you more than what the regulation. Perhaps, perhaps.
The locality of the road, if you can't do anything, it's private property.
Right, and we're, we've already taken so much of the butters' property. I, I just, I can't.
The selectmen policy gives time for the, the time ahead to get back and they actually put it in their policy, so. Get up with the select.
Yeah, I, I think our recommendation should be 10% or, you know, something else if you want, but 8% in this case. The road can take it, it's the policy. Needs not be inconsistent.
Yeah.
But the selectmen.
Yeah, let's segment, if they don't want to follow their own policy, let them do that.
Right.
So you guys can pitch the selectmen and station.
Just before you make that, there, the body's here, you're gonna give.
Yeah. Oh, up comment?
Like to speak on this?
Uh, actually, real quick, could you do your name and your address?
Wait, can they?
Can you come up to the table?
You gotta come up. Sorry about that.
You're going to make a comment.
Yes, I am.
So, uh, Steve Marvajak, uh, my wife, Lisa and I both. We are the last house. We are the last house, so, um, we had objected originally and, uh, after we've had an opportunity to walk through the. And specifically, road widening, uh, where it comes to that right-hand turn. When you get to that right-hand turn, which gets through to Robin's house and then subsequently to our house. Next thing that we just got, that I just got coming, well, these gentlemen, I was coming into, cutting into. Still property. Satisfied our concerns.
Great.
Because for us, it was, it's all about activity, about the bill. Do with anything other than just really getting. So that's, we're, we're completely dependent on that one.
Perfect, thank you.
They're on paper.
All right, so, do we have a consensus to 10% in this particular case? Is that the one here?
You wanna close public comments?
Oh, I'm gonna close up comment, sorry.
Anybody?
Oh, you know what? Okay.
All right, in this case, we recommend the 10% of the construction cost, by construction costs, we have. The new construct, updated construction cost.
Put that into.
Would that be based off of the site plan that they have provided?
Well, he, he put in 380 in the thing and he's saying it's gonna be way less than that, so. I mean, you can, we'll say 10% of the construction cost, when you're taxed, select when you should, might want to update that number. We don't know that we need to say anything other than.
Do you agree with the improvements there?
Well, they're doing 18 grand now, which I think would be well received, but we're still.
Not necessarily the monetary value, the improvements that they adjusted.
I think that. I'd stat weigh in on that. Fire chief's busy and the road agent was unhappy and hopefully he's happy now, happier. I think we want to have. You know, with them, this little fund's gonna be spent.
No, I'm just trying, I'm, I'm happy with that, you're telling me, but I'm trying to figure out what's her right. Are you happy with, but, take the 10% out. I know it's part of the policy, but are you okay with what? Like, there's, so as far as the recommendation, say, the proposed scope of work. To widen the road for safety and that sort of thing, um, as they have explained in their application. As long as they meet that 10% requirement. I don't know, I can just be plain blind and just say they need. Cause they're probably good, the select board, I feel like, would say, okay, well, the planning board's recommending a 10%. Why haven't you shown us 10%? And then the applicant's gonna go, but I'm just playing like.
Well, I think.
Being like, well, I have provided what I'm gonna do. The costs, I have updated the costs, here it is. I just don't.
Well, to me.
I don't know.
To me, you know, you ask the staff to weigh in. Road agent, they, they've, they've, they've done a diff, they've modified their plan.
Right.
I think we want our chief and the road agent to look at it again and say, we still think the road can accept more. Not.
Okay.
They should mention that. Taken the original comment by the fire chief.
And respond to those.
And they responded, and this is a new plan. You have to emphasize that, you know, and do that.
Yeah.
And they could only apparently do what they were allowed to do. You can't intrude on any further property.
Right, yeah.
And if the fire chief and the road agent say, what they've done satisfies me, I don't think any further investments required, then that's, I'm fine with that too.
Goal played anything you want.
You know.
Get up to that.
Uh, I know.
When would nothing?
They can only spend, you know, $20,000.
I think that we, for the previous case, we're saying what, what can reasonably be spent to upgrade the road. And if this case, it's only 7%. But I recommend the 10% unless road agent says any more would be not appropriate use of dollars.
Yeah, would be helpful to have the. Yeah, they're usually.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I really question whether to review it again, because we're, we're exceeding the requirements. If we're exceeding the requirements regardless, if I take my son out there on that road, it's not gonna cost me 10% of construction, you know?
You know, and it's.
The market value if you hide it out. If someone wants to put sweat equity into it and it doesn't cost them that much out of pocket, you're totally allowed to do that by that select and policy. But that's why they have you quoted out, like, if you hide it. So this is what, this is what the value of that work is.
Gotcha, so, but that, and that, that bears the, that's actually a good point because that's exactly what we're doing, is to try to get these costs down. Is that we're using our own machinery to go in there while we're doing some other things. We're working on still wagon.
But if you had it, so have it quoted out, like you would, let's say you hired it out and you brought your opinion. Did that work, and that's all you did, what would you charge to do that? That's the true market value of the work you're doing.
Probably third party.
No.
Because we've had other ones that where they actually got a quote on what it was to do the work and then they did the work themselves and it only cost them half of what the quote was. But they still did the work that the selectmen authorized had to be done before I give them the CO.
Okay, and.
It's the volume of work that the selectmen authorized based on what that estimate B is being done by a profession.
And, you know, Dwight, do we, we're saying 10%, if the road agent and the fire chief come back and say, what they've done is sufficient. Then I think probably selectmen will go along with that.
No.
You know, we, the previous case, we said, there's, there's no reasonable amount of money that can be spent that's worth putting into this road. If 7% is the right amount to put in the road, I think it's probably reasonable that selectmen will go there.
Yeah.
So, but the policy's 10. If the road can take 10, we want 10. If the road can't take 10, then something else is fine.
Yeah, again, we're going to, you know, we're going as far as we possibly can with it because that land, we can't take that.
Yeah, take that land.
Can't.
But you, but you gotta make that case, Dwight. The, you know, you can't do any more than this.
Okay.
You gotta make that case.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
You're so passionate, it's just, we're very, very hard on.
I should, on behalf, on behalf of clients is a good thing, Dwight.
I heard lumber prices are coming down.
Well, they're starting to plateau, doing a little bit of this, but then glass is going up 40%.
Sheet goods have gone down a lot.
Sheet goods haven't.
Down 30 days in a row, so.
Oh, wow.
Two by fours.
PVC.
All right, I have a counter, a potion.
I second it.
Go turn.
I second it.
Yes.
There was no.
Favor.
Own favor.
No, we just give the recommendation to selectmen, selectmen.
Just to let know, um, I'll email it out too. Um, just mention that select board being is for August 8.
August 8. All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.